Well, you're now recording Judge.
Thank you. Good afternoon, neighbor. We'll get started, please. Notice by giving that especially the regular committee of the government and commissioners court will be held at 13th of September 2021 at 3:00 PM. Free County Council of Texas and also be a video conference with the link provided. Enter citizens may participate in person at the courthouse, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic, citizens encouraged to instead participate by accessing the web link found on the government. During the meeting, the following subject will be discussed to wit. Item number one, the invitation to pledge allegiance. Those who want to participate, if you'd want to stand up and fire heads, please.
Thank you for your increase in every area of our lives today. We choose to set our hopes of you knowing that you want us to do more in our lives than we can ever imagine. Teach us to be a vessel used by you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all. Thank you. Now we go to item number two to the top agenda. I think there's a couple of changes we're going to make on here.
Yes, Judge, if we can go ahead and switch item number one and two to two and one on actual agenda items.
Twenty-five, okay. Yes, please.
And Judge, if we can also omit item number nineteen.
Okay, thank you. Joseph, you said a estimate twenty-two and twenty-two. Do you want to continue with that?
Again, I would say if you want to go ahead and go to that one, and I'll just support know that I haven't had a chance to review you.
Okay. Okay. And then what else? Any other changes?
Judge, if there's no further changes, I go ahead and.
Yeah.
Judge, if there's no further changes, I move to adopt the agenda with said changes.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Tercilis to adopt the agenda with the changes that we discussed later second. Second, Commissioner Graff, for a favor. Approved, thank you. Item number three, old business, new business.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, okay. Presentation action did items. And again, we sit the number two to item number one.
It was. It was on action agenda, not on, not, not on business.
On page.
Right.
Right. Wanted to post to be switched.
So where we are right now then?
Right.
We're right there. Okay, so these weren't going to be changed.
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, item number one would be, I'm a Chris Matias field kind of request. Consider the action of selecting an insurance provider from RFPs received for insurance coverage for general liability, automatic automobile liability, auto physical damage collision comprehensive crime, cyber liability property to include buildings and contents, equipment breakdown, mobile equipment, electronic data, media and hardware that were received by a specified deadline. Crystal.
I think Commissioner, this is probably the third time we're discussing this with the insurance. The first time was to open the bids and then give the commissioners or give me the opportunity to compare both bidders. And then the next time we brought it back was to give it to the commissioner his chance to review the information that both providers submitted. So did the commissioners have a chance to look over the, I believe I sent the email for travelers and then everybody got a copy of the red binder. Commissioner, how many questions? I believe we have Victor with fact and we have Craig representing LaGuardia Insurance. Ready to make a decision?
You're ready to decide, Commissioner, you want to visit with you? No. I need a motion to see which ones you want to call and select, please.
Judge, I'm at the motion to accept.
Okay. Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Graff to accept that insurance. We are second.
Our second judge.
Second Commission, Colonel Salis, on my favor. Approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your service, I'll let me know when they show we continue to provide great service.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, now we're going to.
Yes, no.
Yes. Okay, now we're adding number two to the county building maintenance supervisor request. Two point one percent detection and approving the construction contract between the, between the amount of a million four hundred fifty-nine thousand, one fifteen dollars and sixty cents between field conditions on the well contracting for the building improvements for the county building located on seventeen ninety-six, business thirty-five East Pearson, Texas.
Tom. Good afternoon. Everyone. Again, this has been an ongoing project for quite some time now. We finally got to where everybody says it was to proceed. Unfortunately, in the past meeting, we did not have the official contracts and designs. We have received those today. Have those on hand. So again, we're still recommending that we proceed with this project.
Anyone have any questions for Tom?
I don't get.
If there's none, I need a motion to consider. Except in the country.
I'm sorry, Judge, I have a question for you. I know that you spearheading this project and you had a meeting with building maintenance, county engineer, the architect and community real. I just want to know, are you still in support of this contract?
The only problem that I have, it's, it's been dragging on for quite a while and we are talking about a lot of money being invested.
I may ask, what are the, what were the, what was the, what was going to take place with the building? I'm curious as an employee and as a citizen.
Well, my concern is, again, I think I'd rather. I would really, really just table it for right now and then come back and visit with it. Again, it's a lot of money that it's going to be involved in remodeling a building that we already have. And that was my main concern about. I'll give you a good example of one of the building for the city itself. I think it was a million two hundred thousand for a bank building. And here we have an old building and it's going to cost more to remodel it than having a new building. So if I may, I'd like to just table this and bring it back again the next commission is court.
Judge, if I, I, I do know that this has been ongoing issue with coming real. They're, they've been waiting for a building. If we do table it for much longer, where will that put us with providing service to becoming real?
The next meeting, I believe it's on the twenty-seventh.
Do we foresee any changes as far as willing the price down? Or is that pretty much where?
That's pretty much, when we met, incentives and the agreement of everybody proceeding with this.
And it was.
It was at two million.
Nine, one point nine.
Yes, change, correct.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, sir, would you come up to the microphone?
Yeah, you know, man, we need for you to be sure you do the right things.
Hello, my name is Jose Montez. I'm in the construction ministry for quite a while and I'm looking at some numbers that are, like you said, they're pretty high. I mean, I don't see how you can spend so much money. Like I said, for a billion, it's already been built. I mean, in that case, knock it down and build it again. Why do you want to remodel a building that's so old to pay so much money and we do it again in the next ten, fifteen years? This doesn't make sense. Sorry, guys. Numbers don't lie. Those are a lot.
What else?
I think we should wait at least another year. By that time, we start working on that building because even though we build it tomorrow, we don't want to be able to do nothing because they're COVID. You know, he's going to stop everybody. So why spend money right now when we can spend on something now that we need?
Oh, that's fine.
Stuff that we need to fix.
I understand that, but I'll revert back to Mr. Tercilis's question. How are we going to provide services to?
Right, I understand.
Their request.
That, that's my main concern is we've been working with community real. They've been very patient with us and the citizens are, we're, they're being neglected.
I understand.
So we need to find a way. If we're not going to go this route, I mean, that's, that's totally fine. But we need to figure out a way to provide service to allow community out.
Right, yeah.
To provide service.
We had the chance, Commissioner, we had the chance six months ago and somebody didn't finish the paperwork. Remember, we invited them to commission court. Okay, so now it's triple. We're going to pay the very first time, triple.
Okay.
So while say, I'm not worried yet. I'm going to stay. I think we should wait another year. That's all I'm going to say. No comment.
What's your girlfriend?
I'm leading. We might have had an agreement with we know real and told them we were going to provide this building. We would bought this building for its sole purpose in order to do that. And up until a month or so ago, we were all on the same page and now it's sudden we're not.
Yeah, because it went up, triple the price.
Well, it went up over our estimate, but we never did have a bid price until just recently.
Exactly. And we've been fighting it back and forth. We can afford it. I mean, I'm pretty sure we can. But why do we want to have a building that we're going to be able to use?
My question is, John.
I'm willing to follow your lead on this. I think this was your project from the beginning and I, I know you were skeptical of it when the price, when the estimate was one point nine million. I know that you met with Emma Garcia from Community Real and made the commitment at this price. But if today you're against it, I am. I'm not going to try to rally the votes to rule you.
And like I said, Judge, I mean, I do agree it is, it is a hefty price. But I need to reiterate again, where does that put us with community? What, what can we do for them?
Can we get another bid from a local carpenter? I mean, to see compared with the one you got and compare with one of local carpenters.
I think we can. I just think we need to have a plan. We had a plan and we, we, we got to the plan. Now we have to replan this. So I.
Commissioner, we did get two bids. They were both at one point.
Yeah, I understand. We didn't go for it, ma'am.
Right, so we, we had to, we had to see which one was responsive to the notice for bids.
But, okay, they told me to look for local carpenters and I found a friend of mine, you know.
So a carpenter is not going to be able to.
Well, I understand, but the conference has got ways to get whatever concrete layers, bricklayers, or whatever you want to call it. You know, we found ways. We can get a whole package.
So this has been bid three times.
I understand. Yes, it's been bid three times. It's way up, up to the skies.
And I, and I don't disagree with the process. This is why we've had over a dozen meetings to, to answer the question about, you know, you did made a comment about why, why is this costing us just about as much as we're having a new building? Because it is a new building. We're literally getting down to the foundation. There is nothing remaining of the existing building and it's, and we have to attach a separate building just for the background. I mean, we, we can't even go and reuse the utilities that are there. Even if we wanted to open, let's say we didn't do any remodeling to the building. It's literally not inhabitable right now and we don't have any utilities. They won't give us utilities to get into the building just as is. If we just wanted to open it up as it is. I, I, I think I'm with Commissioner as far as we executed some agreements with Community Real. I would just ask that you go back and look at those agreements. I don't want to find us in trouble. And maybe we speak to Joseph about that. I'm not sure what we agreed to do or when we agreed to have the building open, but I do know that we, we've committed already to moving the project forward.
How long is that contract?
Um, wait, you mean to execute it?
Yes, to execute the contract.
I, I think it would be, and it's probably a legal question for Joseph. It would be unfair to keep, not just unfair, but we may end up paying a an increase in cost in materials if we hang on to the contract longer than just a little while. I mean, they, they expect in the contract, it says that they would get started by the end of September. They're expect, they're, they're committing that the material prices are, are that number. And no matter if they go up or go down, they're going to assume the risk on that. I mean, there is nothing that says it can't go back for next commissioner's board. If, if there's some more discussion that needs to be had, that I, I would agree to. I think Emma Garcia didn't attend today because she thought it would go through as, as we indicated for last, last mission.
I would still like to go ahead and just, you know, mind table and bring it back on the twenty-seven.
Is there any way that whenever we, whenever we bring it back on the twenty-seventh, if there is going to be another plan of action to present that plan of action?
I think we can bring.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Can we get another bid yet? Or we're going to have to stay with the two bids that they already have?
Want another big, you're going to have to after that for another day.
Yeah.
Okay. And we cannot have a five for a bid by the twenty-seven. It would have to be longer.
Okay.
Do we need a motion table it then or just?
If you're going to table it, then yes, you would need a second and a vote.
And if no action then?
You're not taking any action on it. I'll guess you just don't have to make, take any.
Okay, but then we can bring it back on the twenty-seven. There's a machine score. Okay with that, no action on it and bring it back.
Yes, Judge.
Okay. Now we go to our number four during discussion. Anybody have anything to discuss?
I do not, Judge.
Okay, thank you. Now we go, number five, citizens to be heard. Any citizens to be heard?
Yeah.
I do have Ronaldo Tremino present on Zoom. He would like to speak and I also have Christian Wilson in person and she would like to speak as well.
Hear me, Judge?
It's good. Hang on, Mr. Tremino.
Okay.
Judge, you might want to ask him if they're going to, if they're speaking for the purposes of the agenda or later on we're going to have a public hearing for the budget itself. Two, yeah, well done, Patrick.
Okay, is it going to be for the agenda that we have or for a public?
It's going to be for, it's going to be for this agenda. A few quick comments and I know that you're going to have a public forum later on and I'll talk about that later on. But I just want to have a few comments on the, on the overall agenda.
Okay, but remember with allowing three minutes on there.
Correct.
Okay, sir. Go ahead.
So regarding your, your overall process of how you decide things, I just want to make clear that, you know, the future of Frio County is not just the county. It's Dilly, Divit, Moore and Pierceall. And, and, and I know how it's, I know it's hard to make decisions based on the needs of the county residents. So, so when you make these decisions, I think you need to start looking at, you know, how is this improving the quality of life for the majority of the residents? And I think that's the way you should start looking at things. If, if a particular expedite, you know, if, if you're spending money or you're doing things that don't really benefit the county that much, maybe you should move on to other subjects. I'm not saying yay or nay on any of the things you just discussed. I'm just saying is that, you know, you need to have a little cheat sheet next to you to determine the quality of life. How are you improving the quality of life to our residents in the upcoming years? And I think in the past, we have struggled with that, you know, sometimes we don't do all the right decisions. But that's hindsight. I mean, moving on forward, you, you, you guys have a lot of common sense and I think you have a lot of, you know, people there that can help you make those decisions. You have staff there that can help you make those decisions. You have consultants that can help you make those decisions. So I think you need to look at how does this improve Frio County and then set those goals on the what, what that's going to be. But then the other part is how are you going to do that? You know, what standards are you going to do? You know, are you going to bid? You're going to use local sources? You know, are you going to terminate offices? You're going to increase offices? Are you going to, are you going to increase salaries? Are you going to abide by the state and, and you know, this hoopla, you know, all the border patrol mess that we're getting into? Or we're going to get out of that business or we're going to go into that business? So I think we need to sort of look at how does this benefit our county? And don't worry so much about federal and state and neighboring counties. Just worry about our county and how it impacts our county and then spend those resources appropriately. Thank you, Judge. I know you have a heavy agenda. Thank you, Commissioners.
Lawson, did we have? Okay, please.
Make sure that it's green.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me? So I have a copy of what I'm. So my name's Kristen Wilson and I am here asking permission for my company, Wilson White tails here in Pierceall to rent the Frio County Regional Park this Thursday for a catered dinner for my customers. That's it. This Thursday and it is available according to the correct, and they gave me a price of $200, but I needed to come here to grant, to have, ask permission. Because I have over fifty people, I'm going to say no more than seventy-five. And also Wilson White tails will not be providing alcohol, but I cannot promise that my customers will not have it in their vehicles. And I was told I do need to have a deputy there. So that's my next stop. If you say yes. And I was told I have to rent additional porta potty. So that's all I know.
Did they give you a kind of rules for it?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, on the website, they said this was an old application with the rules. So I did suggest to them to put the new one on there, but this, she said this is what basically the same. So would you like to see that?
No.
Oh, okay. So it is for Thursday. I just said seven o'clock in the morning till probably eight or nine. That allows us to clean up.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with nobody else.
Okay, we've been, we've done it before. We couldn't do it last year because COVID. So I think I'm in good standing with everyone.
So there is going to be alcohol or there's not?
I am not providing it. That would be Wilson White tails, Inc., but I cannot promise that my customers won't show up with something in their vehicle. I'm not going to go be their mommy and look in their cars, but I.
But what if they decide to take it out of their car and bring it to their car?
I, I, I believe that's allowed, but I have to have a deputy, I was told.
Well, here's the problem we have is this license agreement, which by our rules needs to be approved.
Okay.
That nobody told me, I don't think, or anybody, any of the other members of the commissioner's court that this was needing to be approved. So it's not on the agenda.
Oh, I, yeah, I don't know how it works. I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, as a public entity, if we don't give at least seventy-two hours notice of what we're going to discuss and consider on this meeting, we cannot consider it or else it would be considered a class B misdemeanor and they can all be kicked out of office if they were to consider it without proper.
So I needed to give you seventy-two hours before being here. Okay.
Somebody lets me know that, hey, we have somebody out there who's looking to rent a park. And I'm not saying this is you.
Okay.
And that we need to have a license agreement approved and then I will place it on the agenda for Commissioner to consider it.
Okay.
For whatever reason in this situation, that wasn't done.
Okay.
So now I'm desperately trying to think of a way to and again, maybe Commissioner doesn't want me to go down the road, but trying to figure out some sort of middle ground that we can allow this without some sort of license. And I would say.
Make of any way?
Well, I would definitely think that we don't want to incur the liability of liquor being consumed on premises of our park without a proper license agreement in place. I think the rest of the liability is probably in. There's going to be hunting, is this hunting related?
Yes, sir, there's dove hunting in the area. So.
There's not going to be any hunting on the premises.
Oh, no, no, not zero, zero. So I'm, I'm looking at the, I know there's something in here about alcohol. Let me see.
I guess is there any particular reason it's never made its call? You guys get this?
We were receiving it today. And the reason we asked her to come and she said exactly what, what Bertha had said, but again, for the license agreement, it has to be approved. So and then that's the only thing I could see also that was a hiccup.
Correct. Again, there is nothing to keep somebody from taking seventy people to the park tomorrow if they want to, if the parks open. So I would say they're fine to do that. They're fine to have a dinner. The only thing I would talk to them about would be the use of alcohol without us having to properly execute vice.
There's no vote on this.
So again, I guess what we can let you know is that again, while we may not be able to execute a license agreement, the park, it appears is open for your guys' use.
Okay.
There's nothing that's on you or any other person from town. Not, don't anybody else go out there.
Yeah.
But you guys are welcome to go out there on Thursday. We would just make no liquor be consumed on premises without a license.
Okay.
But I think as long as you're using the other terms of the agreement, we're probably not going to have any heartburn if you have an event out there without.
Okay.
Unfortunately, Commissioner's court aren't in a position right now where they can say, yes, we agree with that because then they would be, you know, taking some sort of position on something that's not before, but I think legally that's, that's the best we can probably say at this point.
Okay.
You know, you go out there and you can have a lot of people have an event, but I would just, again, no consumption of alcohol or no weapons.
No weapons. No weapons.
I mean, they could have one in their car.
Okay, I was gonna say, they're coming from hunting. Okay. So no alcohol consumption, even though the deputies will be there.
Well, again, one of the reasons.
Cause we don't.
Agreement executed is so the county and therefore the taxpayer, because again, if something bad happens on that property, it's because somebody was drinking. I can guarantee you, whatever enterprising lawyer out there is going to get involved, is gonna wanna go after the party involved with the deepest pocket, and the deepest pocket on the table is free accounting.
Some of them are gonna be there, some lawyers.
The taxpayers, we don't fund.
Yeah.
But taxpayers pay that lawsuit, so we're just saying, since we don't have this license agreement to protect the taxpayers, we would ask that no liquor, or I would ask that no liquor.
Why is there a, a difference on the fees, uh, two hundred dollars were there versus a bunch over here?
Because of the larger events, Judge, require more preparation, cleanup usually on time. And so we have a cutoff for a certain number of people that are going to be planned at your event. Is, we just don't have very many of them. Why it never comes up? I think the last time we had an event large enough to generate, we had that music festival, and we haven't had one of those since.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
May I show this to you, Judge? C.
Could we pass that and let him read C?
I don't think it's on the, yeah, correct.
Well, it says alcohol beverages, so. Did you see that?
What, I, I don't know what.
Yeah, uh, see.
Again, it also states that if you're going to put on that road, you have to have a license. So again, I, I guess, the next question would be, is, is if that money can be refunded to her if she's not going to be able to avail herself to the fees for which it was intended. Again, what I would suggest is to get with the engineer's office and we can see about possibly refunding that fee or not.
It's actually in your hands. I haven't paid it to her yet.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, it's a money order.
I don't want it.
Actually, 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 so it's a money order made out to Roden Bridge already, so I don't know if HEB will.
I, I.
Probably not.
Couldn't tell you.
Well, okay, I'll just make a nice donation.
Well, uh, again, I'm not sure if you wanted to accept something like that.
I, I was just following directions on that application. Yeah, so.
We would even have to have it on the agenda to accept a donation.
Right, I'm sorry for the confusion. If it would have, if it would have, if I would have had any wind that this was going to happen.
Yeah.
Certainly would have taken it upon me to help you get this done the first way, but unfortunately, I just found out about it.
Okay, so I, I don't have to pay two hundred dollars?
No.
Okay, but I can still reserve it? No?
Well.
It wouldn't be a reservation.
Not technically a reservation, but I mean, anybody, a lot of people go out there, like, if you were to wake up today and say, I wanna have a hundred of my best friends go to the park, there's nothing to stop you from.
Oh, okay.
You just might not be able to do that to the exclusion of anybody else.
Okay.
So you could certainly have your event out there, and, like, when I drive by the park fairly regularly, and I don't see anybody having a drink out there usually, just keeping you from having yours.
Do you still want me to rent a porta potty? It's over fifty people? So we don't need that part?
It, it, it just really depends on how many people show up, because.
I know, I think the way, if, I say worse, I, I say seventy-five, but then it can be fifty, it can be sixty-five, you know, so, but no more than seventy-five. So, okay, so no porta potty. What about deputies? Yes?
Again.
And I know that's on my expense.
Mainly there to deal with any accidents or issues that never arise with the consumption of alcohol. So, again, if you were to go out there with a hundred of your best friends, you wouldn't be a debt sheriff deputy or a film softie on present to do so. So I would say, if you're going out there without a license, you wouldn't have to pay attention.
So I know this was the application online, and there's a newer one. I highly suggest update that. So, okay.
One of the main problems we have, we, we generated these documents because we have a music festival a number of years ago, and you can imagine, a music festival is a very large event with a lot of ins and outs and a lot of. What happened, exactly right.
Correct. Correct.
And unfortunately, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach, and oftentimes we end up with situations like this where it could fit as well as we would like, but we're between the best of things.
Okay.
Are you looking to rent, like, the barbecue pit area or just to be out there?
I actually have a chef that has his own trailer and barbecue. We, we mainly wanted.
She can still come and rent the space.
We wanted the spa, actually, we wanted the cover and the table and chairs because it's so hot.
Okay, we, we can still do that under a regular park rental.
Okay.
And I'm gonna have to get you the price on that, because if you're gonna go to eight, there is a, even, an evening, it's not two hundred, but it'll be, uh, a little less. What we can do is, is deposit that check and then refund you the difference.
Perfect.
And, and still make the reservation so you have full control of that area.
And I'm to be at your office by seven AM, is that correct? Somebody's there at seven? Okay, I will do that.
Actually, I can go out into the hallway, then we can go look at it.
Okay.
You don't have to rush.
Okay, thank you.
Lord, do we have another one for citizens of the world? Oh, Robert, Robert, please.
Judge Commissioners, my name is Robert Arida, taxpayer, and I've prepared a statement that I'd like to read in the records. For two years now, I have been advocating the use of GPS monitoring to help reduce the number of repeated offenses for violence against women in Frio County. You may recall, I was here a few weeks ago, and I met with you, and we discussed my pilot program, strategy and detail. I'm here to remind you and ask you again to consider asking, adding this pilot program to your budget workshop, especially since the county attorney told me last week that he has confirmed there may be grant money available for this type of project. Since our last meeting, I have met with Judge Luna and the Sheriff's Department on multiple occasions to discuss plans to implement this program. You all may recall, Judge Luna stated in open court, quote, "We have seen more and more domestic violence cases, and I think if we can save one life using GPS, it would be worth it, end quote." Well, I agree with Judge Luna's assessment, because in my opinion, every human life is priceless. My hope here today is that, as you are considering finalizing the numbers for next year's budget, you will stop for just one moment and think about your grandmothers, your mothers, sisters, and daughters. Think about how could you, how you could use your authority as commissioners and apply taxpayer resources to protect to a project that is proven to best help protect women like them from continued acts of violence and abuse. Gentlemen, the lives of countless future victims, children and their families are in your hands. Judge, thank you for your time.
Do we have anybody else, citizens of the world? Gentlemen. Sure, you have to step up here, please.
In your estimates, how much would a pilot program cost?
Well, it would depend on the use. The use, uh, you gotta remember, this is an indigent program, is what I pitched. Now, we're not on the agenda, and I appreciate the Commissioner's Board allowing me to speak. It would vary on use. So if we have one indigent person, it's at three hundred dollars a month. Okay, now, I'm pitching an indigent program, but there's two companies that do GPS monitoring, so it's not just my company, there's two. Okay, what I'm suggesting is that Commissioners set aside some money, five thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand, whatever would work. But here's the thing, what if we don't use it at all? Exactly. What if we don't use it at all? What if, what if the money is never used? It stays there. But here's my thing, if you have a couple who are going through problems, okay? And the offender says, I'm indigent and can't postpone, what are we gonna do, just lock them up in jail? We're gonna let them out because we don't have a jail. We still have a problem with the jail. I know the sheriff worked you hard on this. I know he is, we have to communicate with this department. But even still, jail is not the solution. It comes to domestic violence. If we can keep people away long enough so that they can reason, we might prevent future violence.
Do we have any numbers on how many cases that Frio County's seeing domestic violence?
I don't have any exact numbers. I have, I can't tell you that during the COVID epidemic, people have been forced indoors next to each other for a finite period of time, and, and situations like that, bad things happen. Now, I do think it's a bit, I don't think he's necessarily, again, he's painting this dire picture that unless we go with this program, that this option is not available to us. Well, that's frankly not true. Our JP do have the ability. Now, I know he has pitched us some options, that it, again, depending on who you talk to, might present a more financially viable method for doing this. Well, so JP's, uh, have the ability to order somebody as a condition of willing to bond, to wear an ankle monitor. They do this, okay? They don't necessarily use, uh, Mr. Barata's company, but they do it. Now, again, whether or not it's more financially feasible to go with him or another company, I don't know. I, I've not been a proponent of the number. Um, but we do have that ability, and the judge does have that ability to grant an ankle monitor during conditions of, uh, or during protective working. Which is kind of why we're.
I know that, I know what you're saying, and it's just some questions, the numbers. You just go on and on and on. What I'm saying is, the pilot corps, if he's asking for a certain amount.
Not fast to sit down, please. Sorry about that. No, it's not. Yes, and I understand. Number six, your business presentation, item number one. Ronald Rota, Attorney at Law, Lambert, Samson Melo, request update on the liquid fines collection services by Lambert, or Gromberg, Samson. Ronald.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. This is the collection report for the month of August first to the thirty-first, for the JP collections. We were assigned from the court's eighty-nine accounts totaling over twenty-nine thousand dollars. Citations collected, a hundred and thirteen citations totaled over thirty-one thousand dollars. Cancelled by the court, ninety-three citations totaled over twenty-three thousand dollars, and citation resolved, uh, with two hundred and six totaling fifty-five, over fifty-five thousand dollars. Activity from our firm from that month of August first to thirty-first, we mailed out one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five letters. We had address and phone updates, four hundred and fifty-seven, which initiated new letters to be mailed out to those, uh, citations that were due. Phone activity, we had a hundred and fifty-six inbound calls, and we made three hundred and fifty-three outbound collection calls. That concludes the, uh, August twenty twenty-one. All the precinct information is in your. That's correct, by each individual precinct. And then any questions on each individual, just give me a call. Thank you, sir.
Now, we're going to add number two, Nario Yara, the third, the owner, Derby, and requests presentation regarding the current status of Derby in the private water system and the Committee of Derby Texas.
Okay.
Yes, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, uh, that was a good presentation by Limburg, there, your tax consultant, and that's really one of the main reasons I'm calling. Uh, I do get calls from them on the property there at Derby. Uh, I, I explained to them that, uh, that during the transfer of the certificate of convenience and necessity, uh, to me, uh, I was not transferred the property. Uh, the property's still under Derby Water Supply Corporation, um, whose president at the time was a guy named, uh, uh, oh, Randall, uh, Mr. Randall. I attempted it early to, to contact Mr. Randall to sign the property over to, to, to me. He was also the original property owner uh, when the water supply corporation was, um, developed, and he donated the well, or, or he, I don't know if he donated it or what, but he, he, uh, he gave the well to the water supply corporation. So I guess by default, it would go back to him, um, as being the previous owner. Uh, now, in the, the way I've done this, as far as the business was concerned, uh, in the, in the property, uh, it requests that, uh, himself get two free meters and free water. And so I've been providing those, uh, the, the water to, to those meters, uh, since then, so basically it, uh, you know, he, uh, he's had that. Um, but I'd just like to see, uh, before we were, they did find, I think I talked to the, uh, the appraisal district, they did find the original tax exempt form for the Derby Water Supply Corporation. Um, as far as the property's concerned, um, it's listed under the, the, uh, Public Utility Commissioner TC, NTCQ as a, as a water, a public water well. And so it has to be used as a public water well to serve those, the community, uh, from now on. Whoever owns it, whoever takes it over, uh, has to provide water to the, to the, the people. So, uh, with that, uh, I'm trying to see if maybe we can do, uh, or, I mean, again, we can, uh, I guess, save some money by stopping the tax attorneys from coming. Um, but, uh, I'll open it up to you guys to see if there's something that we could do as far as the, uh, the, the taxing on it.
I did reach out to, to our tax attorney regarding this issue and see if there's anything we could do, if we got any discretion to possibly reduce or not tax, since they were, again, providing a far greater public service. Um, the name, Mr. Cavaio and Mr. O'Theven for me, you're not aware of any provision of the tax code that'll allow, take that position. And, uh, again, it might be for the best, considering how some local jurisdictions would like, would probably use the ability to give their buddies tax breaks for varying purposes, so unfortunately, that's not an option in there.
Mr. that, are you still having an issue with the water pumps up there, the pumps and all that?
Uh, well, that, the, the issue that we had, uh, earlier was, uh, was a switch, uh, and I got the, we, uh, got it to back working again, but yes, there were, it's all working right now, correct? I still, I still have now. You know, the other thing is, you know, sometimes the county does get, uh, maybe some grant money and stuff, that Derby was established basically under a grant from the rural development, uh, which is now, uh, well, it used to be Farmer's Home back then, but now rural development. It was started by the county, uh, by Frio County, and, uh, during the process, when they got to, to the end, the one of the requirements was that the county develop a, a water supply corporation, and that's where it went from there. So, um, in, in essence, with, with that being said, um, there, you know, I, I, I did get a grant, uh, from the state, and when the well went bad back in twenty sixteen, I spent all that money to fix the well. Uh, they audited that, that, that project, and, uh, the money I had spent to get, uh, water from Dilly to take, uh, to me, uh, which ended up costing around a little over fifty thousand dollars, uh, was, uh, was not, uh, was not approved, uh, by the EPA, so I got another grant, which is sitting in the, uh, currently it, 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 uh, in escrow. So I got another grant, which is sitting in the, currently it, 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 in escrow. And more likely going to have to take sixty thousand out of that to, to, to give it back to the Warden Board. With that being said, then the rest of the money will be spent to, to fix some of the infrastructure that's there. I did go out for bid about, about a year ago and the prices were too high, were, were more than, than the, than the money I had. I was going to, to, to rebid, but then COVID hit and we've been. Now, also, the, a lot of people in that, in that area have not been paying their bills. I didn't, not do any cutoffs during COVID because I know that they're, they are, you know, some of the poorest people in the county. And I still haven't cut anybody off, but pretty soon going to have to start cutting people off and, and for, for non-payments. My son was in charge of the building. He passed away in April. And some of the people haven't, haven't been billed, but they all know that they're supposed to be paying forty-one dollars a month to Derby and they have not been paying it. So other than that, that's just the situation where I'm at right now. I do plan on getting those things taken care of. But I do need, I am, am getting registered mails from your, your county attorney, the tax attorney. And, and I'm trying to see about trying to get this thing with Mr. Randall Roberts taken care of also and the county. So I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. Mr. Yara, I don't know if you ever talked to Carlos Vargas? You have, we heard about him? He's a grand old, sir. Mr. Yara, this guy, Carlos Vargas.
Carlos Vargas?
Yes, he's a grand writer for the Colonias and all that stuff.
Yes.
You might visit with him and also talk to some people from Dilly. At one time, I know that Dilly was trying to see if they could provide water, a pipeline up to Derby. And they'd be in charge of that. You might try to visit with them again. I talked to some this morning, let's just say again.
That would be, that, that would be, that's, that's exactly the kind of, you know, kind of things I'm looking for is this to, to see. Because I know this last time I did get approved for a new well. But it will, I ended up finding it a little bit too late after that, but Dilly was right behind me. And the existing well that I have does have capacity to be, you know, to maybe bring in Dilly. But we'll see, I will contact Dilly and see with them and see how we can, may, maybe that could be an option.
I think so. Like I said, again, I visited with them and they've mentioned that they'd probably be able to help Derby out there with, you know.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Good luck, sir.
This, this, about the taxes, again, Randall Roberts is probably going to be sending those things coming back saying he doesn't own it or the Water Supply Corporation. So we still have, you know, it's not about the, just the taxes, just the ownership. Because again, the ownership, the ownership is still by, is owned by the Water Supply Corporation.
Okay, all right. That goes together.
Thank you.
Now, we go to item number three. I'm a reassessment, John, for your county commission, petition for request. Presentation from Melmo, area council of government, ACOG, under the development of an economic and committee strategic plan for Freo County funded by the CARES Act, grant from the Economic Development Administration.
Thank you. Could the county clerk's office unmute Claudia Mora, or might say ACOG?
Sure, let me see. Claudia Mora. She is unmuted.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Judge Luna and commissioners. Thank you so much for having me on your agenda today. As mentioned in the caption, ACOG received a grant from the Economic Development Administration through their CARES Act Recovery Assistance Program. And this was a non-competitive grant. We proposed to do three strategic plans in our region. And so we selected Atascosa, Karnes, and Frio Counties to do a strategic plan. This is done at no cost to the county. The only, really, the only thing the county has to worry about is the time that their stakeholders, that would be their residents, some employees, the commissioners and the judge, the time that they put in to discuss what are the strengths and weaknesses of Frio County? What are seen opportunities? What are seen threats? And then we develop the plan from there. So we would, assuming that the, the commissioners' court approves this, we would start working with you next week to identify those stakeholders. And that would be representatives of, of the community. You could, you look at businesses, you could look at Chamber of Commerce, trade associations, in addition to the public servants and the, the elected officials. We definitely want to be all-inclusive in this. Oh, and definitely the school districts. And so, as I said, we would look to start setting up a meeting with your stakeholders as early as November, maybe the last week in October. And at that first meeting, we'll discuss the different demographics of Frio County and basically discuss a state of the county. Where are you at now with your demographics, with your industry, your unemployment, that sort of thing? And then we'll walk you through a, a process of identifying those strengths and weaknesses and what you would like to see Frio County in five, ten, twenty, thirty years into the future. And we want to work with you on that and just tailor it to what you want. It's not what ACOG wants, it's what Frio County wants. And then we'll come back in February for a second meeting and present all those results to you and then start setting goals as well as developing a vision statement and a mission statement for the county. The goal is to present you a draft no later than April of twenty twenty-two and for you to look at, for you to say, hey, this is not what really where we want to go or yes, let's include that. And then we come back with a final draft and a third meeting for your stakeholders and let you take a look at that before we publish it. And the goal is to publish it no later than May of twenty twenty-two. When we work with our communities, we want to work on a plan that's going to get implemented. I know a lot of times people say, well, well, we pay for a consultant and these things end up on the shelf and they're, they're the size of a telephone book. Do you remember telephone books, the type they were? We don't do that. We try to keep it, the plan, small in that, you know, fifty pages or less, something that you can read, that you can understand, that you say, hey, this is what we're going to do. These are the projects we want to do to get Frio County where we want it to be in thirty years. And so we want to work with you to do that. Again, it's at no cost to the county. Alls we ask for is your time and your recommendations on people to include in this process. The, the folks that'll be working on it from ACOG will include me, our Vista Volunteer. We have our public affairs person, Miguel Segura, and his staff, Crystal Ramos, Campos Ramos, excuse me, and some planning folks here at ACOG. So it's all going to be done in-house and, like I said, tailored to Frio County. So I'm hoping that you will allow us to come into your community, have these meetings and get this plan done for you. I can answer any questions if you have any.
And so Ms. Mora and, and commissioners, we actually approved this at our last meeting. We just wanted Ms. Mora here to, to tell us the plan. So you already have permission to proceed?
Good, thank you.
Yes.
I had a flat tire last week and I had no, no tire to change.
Sorry about that.
I was surprised when I opened that up, the, the back of the van and saw that there was no tire.
Do the commissioners have any questions?
No. All right. Thank you for your time, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we go actions and items. Item number one. And I'll let you know your county text for collect. This is two. This is the one that we're doing. Okay, this is the one we're going to do first. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm going to start again on action and items. And number one, we change, okay. I will just to mark the few comments of the request. Two point one, open whole public hearing on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two budget pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section one one, one point zero zero, 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 seven, eight.
So we do need a motion to open.
Right.
Yes. Okay.
Motion to open to the public hearing.
Judge, I move to open and hold a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. Pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section one eleven, point zero zero seven.
What time is it?
Three oh one. Three oh one.
Do you want to four oh one?
Four oh one, four oh one correction. Sure. I, I, again, if you really want to. I don't think there's anything. This is the way. We have to approve the budget before the tax break. Again, if the court wants to open it up for a public hearing for both, I still get it.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Paredes. Two point one, open and hold a public hearing at four oh one.
We're second. Judge to amend for both.
Both. Okay, we, we're trying to do that.
That would be for one point one and two point one, correct?
One point one.
And two point one.
You're all mixed up here.
It's just going to be a public hearing for both. And then we'll, we'll close it. It'll be a public, public hearing for, for both. Then we'll close it and then we will still have to motion each individual. Then I'll move to two point three, go two point three, two point four, two point five, and then move to one point.
So, okay, it's open for one point one and one point two.
One, one point one and two point one.
Okay, one point one and two point one.
Correct.
Okay, for a wonder here, second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Sanson, another favor. Approved, thank you. Do we have anybody from here of the public? And the proposed budget?
I have a few comments whenever you're available.
Okay. Mr. Ternio?
Yes. So Judge, I had a hard time going through that budget converted to a spreadsheet. I'm not so sure why I can't get that in a spreadsheet. It would really help on the review of the budget. But what I want to talk to you about is about four or five items on the budget. And I really want to just talk about the major changes that I see on the budget. The first one is we're getting less money. So if we're getting less money, I'm just wondering, we should be spending less, I would think would be the, the criteria and how we do our business. But I'm not so sure if that's accurate. Is, maybe that's a question I should ask. We're getting less money, but we're spending more. Is that, is that correct?
We're spending about a million dollars less.
We're spending. I'm not sure if I heard the comment.
Yeah, you, you cut out there.
Okay, so. Can you hear me there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so, so are we getting less revenue from taxes? Yes.
To answer your question, you do not have a copy of the latest proposed budget. The one, if you have, was filed in, I believe, July thirtieth. Since then, we've had several budget workshops. We are raising less taxes this year and we have decreased our budget by almost a million dollars.
Okay, all right. Yeah, referring to page five of the budget that I saw on, on your website. The, the next item that I want to talk about is Stone Garden Funds. We're, we're getting two hundred eighty-three thousand dollars from Stone Garden. I'm very adamant about not being the business of Border Patrol business. I don't think we should be accepting money from the state to be doing the work that the Border Patrol should all, should, should be doing in the first place. So that's page five. In page six, I'm not sure, I see a collection that seems unrealistic compared to previous years. Are we collecting like a hundred and, I mean, some enormous amount of money? Or we expecting our debt collector to be collecting a lot more this coming year compared to last year or the previous year? That's on page six.
The, are you, Mr. Trivino, again, this is Chris Amos. Are you referring to the proposed budget on the county website?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That's what you have there. So that, that's what I got to look at. So if you have another budget, I didn't see it posted.
No, the only budget that's proposed is the proposed budget. On page five, you were referring to, what was your question again?
The Stone Garden one, the two hundred eighty-three thousand dollars.
Yes, those are collection, those are revenues and collections that have already been received. The county has to spend the money and then request the reimbursement from the state. So those reflect the reimbursements that we've received back from the state.
Correct. All I'm saying is that. I'm not so sure why. But they're state funds, right?
They're actually, I'm sorry, they're state, federal funds.
They're federal funds.
Yeah.
So Stone, Stone Garden is a federal-funded program?
Yes, it's a federal grant that the Sheriff's Department has the opportunity to request the grant every year.
Okay. All right. I just don't like the idea that we're doing Border Patrol business, that's all. All right. On page six, collection, collections. You have some under the tax, call the tax office collection.
Yeah.
You had zero, you had zero years and now you're going to a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
So to answer your question, the tax collector was collecting for the hospital district, which is fifty thousand dollars contract that she had. This year, she has increased her collections to different entities. I do have the Texas tax collector who, who can speak on that. Mr. Trivino, the amounts that, that increased in my office are going to be from the city of Dilly, Dilly ISD and Pierceall ISD, we are now collecting their taxes. So instead of the appraisal district having any collections anymore, Frio County is going to be doing all the collections for every entity in the county.
Okay, that's good, that's good. I, I like that. You're consolidating, you know, work into one location, it should be a lot easier. Good. The next question, I'm, I'm trying to go as fast as I can because I know it's going to be tedious. The next one deals with the jail. You know, I'm having a hard time figuring out how much we're spending on the jail. And I'm looking at page twenty-six. I guess that's where it starts. And I guess, I guess, I guess you got to ask the question, what's our need and what's our cost? And I thought that we had limited our jail to so many beds. But I guess the question is, I mean, I see like a million dollars being spent and I know that's not a lot of money when you have all that staff and all that infrastructure. But I'm just kind of wondering, how many people do we arrest? And are they worth a million dollars every year or more? So I'm trying to figure out how many beds are we targeting? And if it's forty beds or fifty beds, what's the budget for forty or fifty beds? Because I can't see it on the budget very well. It doesn't, it doesn't flow very well. Can you answer that question in terms of what's our need? Can you answer that question in terms of what's our need and what's our total budget for the jail?
So again, this is a proposed budget. Again, there has been some changes since. We are proposing at one point, the proposed budget you are looking at is one point six million dollars. You know, they're having the operating budget of office size. Prisoner housing, this is to house inmates until we open the, the show. Purchased at non-capitalized. Prisoner meals, prisoner medical, that. Prisoner medical has actually decreased and prisoner meals have increased and we're gonna bring in the.
So I'm not, so, so excuse me, Crystal. So I'm not really asking about the, we're here all day long. I'm not really asking about those details. It's a very general question, right, for the commissioners? What is the intent of our jail in terms of beds? And what's that magic number? One number that we're looking at for funding the jail? I mean, I mean, I know that, I know that we could probably spend five million dollars on the jail and still not be adequate. So the question is, what is that magic number that we're going to be spending on the jail? And how many beds is that support?
Mr. Traneo, Sheriff Morse.
Hello, Sheriff.
The. The projected facility would be forty-eight beds by the end of October thirtieth. Now, right now, we have forty-seven inmates in other people's jails, other county jails. So as soon as the jail opens up, it'll be filled up. And that's, that's where we are right now.
Okay, that answers the question.
The inmates are costing the county about between fifty and sixty dollars a day. That doesn't include the medical.
And, and can I add a few things also? If you can confirm, we're about one repair away from meeting the minimum standards for full-time lockup.
In fact, Thursday, we're gonna have the tax representative come down, do preliminary inspection. And then hopefully by the middle of October, the jail, jail commissioner.
And, and point number two is. When we do bring the forty-eight inmates here, you will not require an increase in the number of jails. Because the dealers who are currently doing transport will not be able to work locally. So basically, the budget will not be affected when you open a full-time unless, we haven't really run a full-time lockup in a while. So there may be some unforeseen expenses.
I can't remember the last time we had a full time.
But we, you, you signed a medical contract, so we actually expect our expenses to go down.
Right, exactly. That's what Texas, South Texas rural health.
So, so thank you, Sheriff. I'm just saying that there seems to be a lack of transparency. This is the first time that I've heard a number, forty-eight beds by October thirtieth. And. Again, what is that gonna cost us on an annual basis? Total operations, maintenance, certification, services? What is that dollar number?
Does the proposed budget not have a jail page?
Yeah, yes, that's what I was reading out to him.
Okay, so, so you can look at the, there is a jail page. This is the first year that we've done that. We separated the jail expenses before they were all under one umbrella, sheriff and jail. So now you'll actually be able to go line item by line item to see what those jail expenses will be.
I, I understand that Jose, but, but I, I, again, I, I don't think, want to be, I, I don't want to go line by line here. I was just, I, I was just thinking that someone there, the sheriff or the auditor or the treasurer should have a number on their head. Adding all those numbers together. What is that number?
The, the number's not just in our head, it's on paper. That's what we're trying to, I'll, I'll read it to you soon as someone tells me what the.
Right, twenty-eight. Twenty-eight, very bottom, total jail.
Two.
The number is.
Yeah, total jail is one million, seven hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars.
Yes, and you have to remember, sir, that you are looking at the proposed budget, not the budget we have. Right here in front of us.
Correct.
And.
Correct.
The proposed budget, that number, we have P F page thirty-one, budget page twenty-seven. In that document, the number was one million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-five. But that's the total number. All the details are starting the page previous.
Okay, all right, all right.
And again, this is the first year we've, we've done this. So that's, you know, I, I think we are trying to get at the heart of what you're asking for.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think the whole, I think the whole county is as well. Because we're saying, you know, if you're, if you're averaging, you know, twenty prisoners, you know, per week, three hundred days. You divide that and, you know, go back to what the sheriff was saying. You know, fifty, sixty bucks a day times forty times whatever. I mean, there's a number that. Is costing the, the county. And all I'm saying is that a little, and I understand this is the first year, Commissioner, but a little bit of transparency on those total costs and future potential costs that, you know, that we have minimized. Or if there's going to be an increase, then I think the public needs to know that as well. So I do appreciate that insight.
And I, I would also like to add that the, the sole purpose of us dividing this up is for transparency.
Yeah, I, 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 I understand that, but, but I also know that most citizens are not gonna go through all those pages. So a statement from the county would be good to saying, hey, how much is it gonna really cost? So I want to move on because I know, I know we get tired. Page thirty-two. I know there's, there's always, I'm talking, I'm gonna talk about this dispatcher services. Every time I call the city, seems like at the county. And I know because that's because after hours or the city is not there or whatever. Does the city pay the county for using dispatching services?
Mr. Traneo, I can answer that, that both City of Dilly and City of Pierceall did not provide any funding for dispatch services.
Okay, well, I think they should, but that's, I guess, talking to the city. So moving on, on page thirty-five. Why are we paying for a DPS officer?
Actually, for the highway patrol, we are paying for the secretary.
Okay. All right. The, the next one on page thirty-seven is dear to my heart. And I guess I'm not sure on the relationships. So page thirty-seven, we have some nonprofits there. And I know that's gonna be discussion later on. Maybe later on, Judge, I would like to know. And even for the county attorney, what is our position with nonprofits? That helps the county, helps the nonprofits, helps the community. I'm a little bit confused on, on the level of support. I'm not saying it is right or wrong. I'm just saying I don't know. And I would like to get that clarified, not, you know, I think we have that as a discussion later on. Why, on page thirty. Seven as well, why are we paying for a social security office? And I'm assuming we don't get the services from San Antonio, that we have to hire our own social security office person. Is that correct?
You are correct. Well, we do have a Ms. Sarah Perchardo that not only provides social security. Information, she is also a resource for several other items for indigents and elderly or brought to anybody in the county. She, this is where she gets.
All right, so, so on the budget, you know, you alluded to a social security office. She's more than that. You know, she's more than just social security. You know, you ought to give her more credit because I think she does more than that. On page forty, I was confused. What special projects?
Actual project that you're seeing here is under the personal services. That's where the salaries for the Sheriff's Department, Operation Stone Garden, get paid at. And under the services, special projects. We, we have really not used that line item. Cover miscellaneous. Line item.
All right, next one is the page forty-one. Why are we paying for vets? We already have a vet's office in San Antonio. Do we have an agreement with the Veterans Administration? Do we have a vet's office?
I can't answer that. I don't know how we try to answer. I know this was, couldn't play too far. I started.
Yeah, he was already there when I started. It was a, it's a veterans liaison. They transport the veterans to San Antonio and then also have any kind of paperwork.
Yes.
And they're on a part-time basis with us.
Okay, but we're there to support vets.
Exactly, yes, sir. They're transporting, they're transporting San Antonio and all that.
For, the reason for transport is for doctor's appointments. These are for the vets that don't have transportation.
Okay, I was, I wasn't aware we did that, just to, just to let you know. Page forty-six. I guess we have an agreement that we maintain the swimming pool. And I've always wondered, and I know we're not gonna discuss it here because it's just, but I tend to think that the city or the school should end up paying for that pool that's in their property. So.
We did it during.
Traneo, there's a trilateral agreement between the City of Pierceall, the Independent School District and the county that's been in place for, gosh, going on thirty years. And required as pursuant to the grant that was originally taken out thirty years ago to pay for the restoration of the pool.
Oh, way back then, huh?
Once that grant is ended, my understanding is there may not continue to be a trilateral agreement. But right now, it's required as a requirement of the grant.
When does the grant end?
I believe it ends in. Twenty, twenty-three, maybe. Again, it's very.
All right. All right, sounds good. That's good. We could look at that later. Page, last item is page sixty-six. I don't know, I think the sheriff, I'm not sure, or Peter mentioned this. The auctions. I, I was not sure on how much money. And the county, not the sheriff, but you know, the way I look at it, this is county money. How much do we get from all the seized vehicles and whatever that the sheriff does? Is there a number? How much we collect from all these auctions?
Mr. Traneo, there's actually two separate auctions that go on. It's the A B V, which is the abandoned vehicle, and then the C. A portion of the C auction funds goes to the DA's office and the rest of the forces states of the county. And that is to help fund the Sheriff's Department in law, for law enforcement purposes. I can't give you an exact number because we don't always have these types of seizures that come through the county. Correct.
How much, how much, how much have we got this year?
For this year, I believe we've had, what was that, Peter? For the vehicle? No, 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 for the, the two vehicles that we sold in auction that belonged to the. Today, DA. About seven thousand. There was two vehicles that were seized that were sold at one of our A B V options. A portion that stayed with the county was about seven thousand dollars.
Okay, all right. I just thought there were a lot more vehicles in that. All right, that's all I have. Judge, Commissioners, thank you for your time. I, I didn't want to go through all the other minor details. I just picked the ones that I thought were kind of weird or kind of major. But I think in general, I, I think there needs to be more transparency in simple, Commissioner Carrizales, to answer your point. In, in, in layman's terms. What we're doing with the jail and what we're doing with the roads, because those are the two largest expenditures we have. I, I don't expect people to be reading this budget or analyzing this budget at all, to tell you the truth. So I, so I know we have the paper online. Maybe they can pick through it, whatever. I don't know. But I think we need to have more transparency in simple terms, a summary of, 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 of our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Traneo. So now we go one.
I want to make sure anybody else.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah. Anybody else out there that wants to, about the budget? Yes, sir. Okay. The Stone Garden program, that's federal money you said, right, correct?
Yes.
How much, how much did the county get for that?
We actually had two grants going back to back. We had one that wrapped up in February and we had another one that started in March or, I want to say April.
And that's made available to all law enforcement in the county?
Or I believe this has to be with counties within the border of Mexico and Texas. And it's put out there on the E-Grants website. And law enforcement agencies who fall in that region can. Can apply for the grant.
How much participation are we getting from the county law enforcement in working that program?
We have about, it varies. Not all the, the law enforcement can work. Can work this because they would have to, normally they have to work their shift before they go to the department. So it varies, it varies from five to eight, just depending on the schedule.
Oh, okay, okay. Also, dispatch service, if I correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe dispatch of the city didn't pay dispatch when I was chief because in return for no dispatch service, they were getting free water. Is that, is that still the, what's going on? No? Yeah, I just can't believe.
Yeah, we get charged for you.
You get the, yeah, I'm just, just like I said, I'm bringing up because that's what it was. They didn't pay for dispatch service, but in return, the county can get the, the water free. So that's changed.
Right, so is I know.
And the last question, are we off the, the restrictions that the jail administration has placed on for the seventy, the holding of seventy-two hour prisoners? Is that still in effect?
No, we're still a seventy-two hour holding facility.
But you've got forty-five.
We have forty, forty-seven in other counties jails.
No, but in this jail?
No.
You don't, you don't have anybody over the seventy-two hour. So you got, you're still holding in other counties?
Still. I have, we have all our inmates in other towns.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, was there anything else that you'd like to add?
No.
Anybody else? If never go to a closer public, right?
Judge, if there's no further discussion, I move to close the public hearing on items one and two at four twenty-nine.
Motion being made by Commissioner Carrizales to close the public hearing at four twenty-nine. Your second. Second, Commissioner Graff, will in favor? Thank you.
Now we need to approve number two before we move on with the.
So which one would be two point two? Two point three, okay.
And that would be if you want, making change to the budget after considering public.
Yeah. Two point three for approved sign and order, Lebanon, Texas for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, particularly for county tax, tax rate. Wait. Oh, right here. So it would be one point three.
Okay, consider that they're gonna make any necessary changes to the budget pursuant to Texas local government code section one, one, one point zero zero eight.
Just the changes that I want to go over that we met with the last budget workshops reconciled the Stone Garden. I reconciled the A R P budget. I reconciled the C. Stone Garden, I reconciled the, uh, ARP budget. I reconciled the seeds again for the Sheriff's Department. I just wanted to make sure. Funding was correct. I reconciled the ABV budget as well. Uh, the donations for Frayo County Events Committee, I needed to, to, um, do that. Those are the reconciliations I did make and I adjusted in the revenue and expense, but, um, line items. I did, um, add, bring in a hundred thousand dollars for the tourism, the ARP tourism. That HOP and Frayo County will be working on, uh, that is reflected on the revenue and expenses. Other changes, uh, last budget workshop, we talked about IT. Uh, the contract price was about forty-three thousand two hundred. I was going to find funding. Um, Roxy made that pretty easy for me, uh, whenever she presented the. Road projects, she adjusted the building structure line item from two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. She brought that down to seventy-six thousand dollars. So with that extra funding, I was able to cover the cost for the IT. And that's gonna be on their facilities management budget under data processing. Another I did, I did wanna bring up with juvenile, uh. We did have a juvenile board meeting again. Um, there was a, uh, increase to one of the clerks and that was approved by the, uh. Juvenile, uh, judges, which was approved on nine, three, twenty twenty-one. You'll see that reflection. In the, uh, juvenile probation office budget. And I did make the transfer, uh, the adjustments to the farm, uh, farm to market lateral budgets. You will see that is a, on the last, last page of your budget, uh, that is, uh, the new budget for road and bridge. Farm to market and it looks like building maintenance. That's gonna be the last, last, last page. It's gonna be, it's gonna look like this. I made those adjustments and I reduced the transfer in from farm to market. Uh, I believe it was a little over a million dollars. We brought it down to five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Of a transfer in. Uh, other changes, uh, that has come up. Cold logic for the constables precinct one, three and four. Uh, there is a, uh, we were contacted by Cold Logic last week that. They weren't paying a privacy agreement. Since they had the equipment back then, I wanna say twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen. At the time was top seed, top seed went bankrupt, Cold Logic took over. Well, they realized they weren't, they weren't billing the, the constables. So the agreements for all three constables vary in price. I am trying to negotiate the pricing. I did let them know that we have a part of revenue downfall. Uh, hopefully I can bring those, uh, agreements back on the twenty-seventh for approval. So I did make adjustments to. Their budget and took the funding out of contingencies. Uh, our contingencies, uh, I believe it was nine hundred for Constable one, nine hundred for Constable three, and six hundred for Constable four. Again, I am negotiating those, uh, those, those, um, those pricing on the contract. Um, so our contingency, um, with the changes that, um. Roxy did to building structures, her contingencies had grown up to three hundred and forty-four thousand. Um, we do have a balance project for general and road and for the farm to market ARP, all small funds are balanced. Um, I don't know, I just wanted to. That y'all know those are the changes and then the last remaining change with the Cold Logic.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if the commissioners or the judge have any other requests as far as changes to the budget, but that's. Those are changes that have been made. Since the last time we met.
No, I'm, I'm happy with the budget as it is.
We're still gonna work later on on the, that face scale that we have.
We do have it, uh, a few items into the agenda to discuss the pay scale.
Okay, so it's later on.
Yeah, but, um. Right, those, that's what I was gonna say, those, uh, those pay grade, uh, the pay grade is for both. Uh, the Sheriff's Department and for the rest of the county, it's implemented in, in the, uh, budget.
So for example, if I'm ever to change the title, would they change it to, uh, to my clerk? Would that be in the same category as right now, changing it?
Uh, that's not hard. Uh, I don't believe that's on the pay grade. I know you had, uh, presented, uh. Commissioners, uh, with the requesting the, to reclassify your, um, executive administrative assistant, so I believe. Judicial assistant. Uh, I did bring it up, um, at the, I wanna say the last budget workshops and you stated that we would wait. So.
So I can't bring it up anymore than?
You can discuss it now. Um, I, I believe it's up to the commissioner to. To agree. But, um, to let you know, Judge, it's not even budget.
Yeah. So again, I can't change the title or nothing like that, like they've done to other offices.
Uh, to request any kind of changes to, to the budget, I, I believe it's. We can request it at this point.
Judge, uh, just to speak on the, on the salaries, I do agree that, um. Pay on many positions is not where it should be. And I would, and I do want all the positions to be reevaluated this coming year. And try our best next year, next budget year to incorporate something.
Yeah, and I agree with you there, uh, all the, this year, everything got out of hand. Uh, and again, that's what I was asking, uh, well, I was visiting with the crystal. And I'll bring it back again. I've never seen so many amended budgets in my life since I've been, I've been here six years. Seems like every month we would combine, I wanna, I've been the budget for this and that, and that was never done before. And now it's been, this year, past, it's been almost every month or change, but that's all I'm gonna say.
Want to do budget amendments, it's because we have to make those adjustments to the budget. If somebody is over on a line item and somebody leaves with the months of service, I was, uh, directed by Commissioner Ford.
And just to say, in, in Crystal's defense, but I don't think you need to be defended, but, um, every auditor I've noticed kinda has their own style. Uh, some auditors will wait until the very end of the year. Uh, I've seen that's what Tracy did. She would wait until the very end of the year and then she would do a bunch of budget amendments at once to bring everything in. Crystal is more of a do it as you go, and I see the logic in both. Would you do it if you go, you're always gonna have better updated numbers to understand where your budget is going. And I think that has a large degree to do. I do think there have been a lot of budget amendments this year, but I, I, I think some of it is due to good bookkeeping on.
Uh, and, and also we had emergency declaration, right? Um, and the, the purpose of the emergency, emergency declaration was to. Um, free up some of the spending restrictions, uh, to address, I think that was another reason.
Where are we at right now?
So now if we're ready to take a vote on the budget, it has to be a record vote by person. So we'll go with. One, Commissioner two, Commissioner three, Commissioner four, and judge. And you will leave say your vote separate instead of just raising our hand for record.
And the proper terminology for the vote, just to clarify?
Just to, uh, approve the budget after then. Oh, no, it's not three, two point four, sorry, we're not two point five here.
So we still have to do the salary after that.
Oh wait, we're gonna have a vote for two point three?
Well.
Okay, okay.
So which one are, are we at the one, two point four? So we're at two point four then?
Yes.
Okay. Let me go and read it. Consider take action on setting salary expenses and other allowances of elected county or precinct officers pursuant to. Texas Local Government Code Section one, five, two point zero, one, three, eight.
Judge, I move to approve.
The motion being made by Commissioner Carrizales to approve two point four to your second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Sincero, in favor?
I need the motion first to open up the vote.
No, I guess, is it just, is everybody ready?
I'm, 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 I'm ready.
Want me to read it first? Two point five, consider the crash and adopt if your county budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. My record board, we're sure to Texas Local Government Code Section one, 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 point zero, zero, eight, eight. It doesn't necessarily have to be a majority vote, does it?
It has to be a majority vote.
It doesn't have to be unanimous. It, it can be, it can be majority.
Ma- majority or four one?
Uh, sixty percent. And sixty percent worked out to be mathematically exactly three out of five.
We can, we can start in reverse. Can we start in reverse?
I don't see why.
Commissioner for Sincero move, or I vote to adopt the Frayo County budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Commissioner precinct three, Rob, Carrizales votes to approve the budget.
Commissioner Graff, precinct two votes to approve the budget. Okay, I've got a question now. Again, I've got a question. Everything was due here. The rest of the budget that was turned into the Sheriff's Department and other, as it included in this voting.
I, I guess I would have, have that certification to what you mean by that.
Well, for example, uh. Item number. Fourteen.
You would have to ask Crystal to be sure, but my understanding is.
Item number fourteen is for this current topic here. Yes, the, the pay grade scale is implemented in the current, in the proposed budget.
Okay, so these votes are for that then?
It's for the whole, including that.
Okay. Okay, there was a. All four, I'm gonna vote against the, the budget. Adopting the budget for this. So do we need to?
You will allow you got me mixed up, which is. We're back here. We're one. Yes, we should be back here for the lateral, lateral road, correct? Yes.
So one point to be considered, the question approving the Frayo County General Fund and lateral road tax rates. For the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-one and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Does this need to be a record vote as well?
No. Okay. I don't know why they do it, but they're gonna wanna make it all traumatic.
Well, I bet you there's been a history of people who said, I didn't actually vote for that.
Thank you. Okay.
Also, you should have it on that, probably the first page.
Right, okay. One point.
Yes. You already read it, right?
Yeah, yes.
If there's no discussion, I go ahead and move on approving the Frayo County General Fund, Lateral Fund. Lateral Road Tax Rates for the Fiscal Year Beginning October one, twenty twenty-one and Ending September thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, motion delay by Commissioner Carrizales and approve it. Approve on the General Fund and Lateral Road Taxes, through your second, second, Commissioner Graff, all in favor? Approved, thank you.
Is this, we have to sign this one? Or is there an official one? Okay, we can do that during documents, right?
Yes.
They're trying to get out of here sooner.
Yeah, we can, this will be right back. So we're gonna be on, uh.
You're moving on to number three, correct?
The one point three.
No, I. You're good. Now, now it's just for you to sign them. Judge, if I may, before we continue on to, item number three, may I request a five-minute recess?
Yes, it'll go ahead and take a five-minute recess. Yes, it'll go ahead and take a five minute request, please.
We convene on the.
Okay, the break. So we'll go and continue on, please. Run number three, right?
Three.
item number three, if you're kind of wish for request, consider the action to designate day of each month on which the court shall convene and never going to determine each month during the next physical year pursuant to Texas local government code section eighty one point zero zero five A.
This is just to establish the dates, correct?
Set the time you have our regular meeting with required to have one meeting.
Okay.
And so this year was the second Monday at three o'clock. That practice or talk about.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Judge, I move to designate the second Monday. At three o'clock.
Okay, motion made by commission of Carlos Salas. We can read. The second day and the Monday at three o'clock, where second. Second question graph for the favor. Approved, thank you. Item number four, I'm Richard Graff, your county commission precinct to request, consider the action approving the completion of continuing education required by county commissioners online except for commissioners. In the first twelve months period of the permission's first term as pursuant to Texas local government codes. Eighty one point zero zero two five. Mr. Gray.
This was passed by the state legislature this past year, the governor signed it to affect. To believe it. I want to say it was September.
September.
September first is when it took effect, however, commissioners can't do it unless commissioner's quarter approves it. So I've got the so two cases going through. Letting this take.
And.
And ever either the whole language on there about not first year not shot against you guys. That's actually the language that's in the statute. The statute says if you're a first term in your first year, you can't do anything.
So how how would it? How would it work?
Basically, this was just the like if the commissioner's court approved this, this will allow you to take.
Oh, the online. Yes, I know what you're talking about now. Yes, 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 yes. I got you.
I won't hesitate further discussion on my promotion.
Okay, motion been made by commissioner graph and item number four to your second.
Second.
Second, which was since you're all in favor. Approved, thank you. Item number five, Dan Wallace, CBEP Business Service Representative, Workforce Solutions Alamo, request five one point one, considered the question approving work experience workside agreement between Freehold County. And workforce solutions Alamo for youth program at Freehold County.
Sorry. Hello, I'm gonna go ahead and present. You want to head and step out. Okay, so my name is Lynn Thompson. I am the Business Service Director with Workforce Solutions Alamo in the rural area. And before I get into the details of the youth program and our sector based model, I would like to briefly introduce you to who we are and what the workforce is. You see, a lot of the times, a lot of people don't know who we are, or they think we're just the unemployment office, but I assure you today, you will leave this room knowing exactly who we are and what kind of services we offer. So the workforce, Workforce Solutions Alamo is a nonprofit organization federally funded by the Texas Workforce Commission. We are one out of twenty eight boards in Texas that share the same vision. Which is strengthening the Texas economy by providing workforce workforce development services to employers and job seekers. And Workforce Solutions Alamo, we offer a wide range of services. We create career pathways. We identify and provide relevant training opportunities. We provide childcare services, assist unemployment claimants become reemployed with relevant skills. Obtain and provide labor market information, assist claimants with resume building, interview preparation. And we also help employers by creating job orders in our system called Work in Texas. So with that, let's go ahead and get into the details of the youth program and our sector based model. The youth program assists targeted youth ages sixteen to twenty four that have barriers. Barriers can be anything from low income, receiving free reduced lunch. And they may be foster care youth, maybe student dropout. Teen pregnancy and even disability. Once the youth is identified and eligible, we place them in a sector based work environment where they obtain gainful work experience in a demand driven sector. And earn an hourly wage of twelve dollars up to three hundred hours. To further assist our qualified youth for success, additional support services are offered such as gas cards, assistance with work and interview attire. Books, fees, school supplies, education, testing and training related certifications. The youth in our youth program are not only gaining work experience, but are being placed in the top most in demand occupations in Freehold County. These occupations that we have identified in Freehold County are government, medical, trades and education. The sector based model increases the possibility of the youth becoming employed in a long term career. They build on their resume and work ethics, and the best part, they won't be put in the position of leaving Freehold County to seek opportunity elsewhere. The partnerships we currently have locally in Freehold are Pierceall Family Dental, Pierceall I N D, A and D Express. City of Pierceall, Deli I S D, South Texas Rural Health Services and Kidville. And I would like to say since March of twenty twenty, when the pandemic did it, we actually placed twenty youth in work experience. I would say. As being in that kind of situation, even having twenty youth to participate in work experience during that time is very positive. Especially coming from Freehold. So I I mean, it's it's great and it's awesome. And as you can see, you know, we strive to be successful and yes, we still have a lot of work to do. However, I believe that if we work together, we can improve the value of the workforce offers to employers, claimants. Make a positive difference in the community. And we can also lead the youth to be successful. So again, my name is Lynn Thompson with Workforce Solutions Alamo. Thank you for allowing me and my team come introduce this, you know, this awesome program to you all. And efforts to create a partnership. Thank you.
So you're gonna be designated in times friends when you can combine it for your county personal interview students, stuff that others want to do with you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
For example, if somebody wants to visit with you or say a group of students want to get together, some of their unemployed. Is there whether to contact you and they can meet with you in a different, for example, different office, something like that.
So we actually have a career navigator. Her name is Jolene Gonzalez. She's the one that works closely with the youth. She is the one that will stay with the youth and really identify those barriers, see where they need the assistance. And once we identify that and we see that they're eligible, then that's when we work with them to see, you know, what their top three occupations they're interested in. You know, and if there is like employment, for instance, since we do have like Pierceall I S D, they're interested in education. We want them to go through the process of having the interview, just really going through like all the steps, right? Because once you leave school, you you're fixing the real world. So we want them to be built and ready for that. And not only that, we want to place them to where they're gonna build on their work ethics. And we do have a center here in in Pierceall. But unfortunately, Jolene, she does go from Medina County to Freehold. So she does have a cell phone. And they're always more than welcome to call her, text her, email her. However, she's willing to come to Freehold. You know, once in a while, you know, if she wants to meet them, you know, face to face. I know she does go to Pierceall I S D. I think they're working on her going once a week. So she can go ahead and engage with the students and see how she can go ahead in the system.
Okay.
So there's a lot of different options. If you guys need us to attend any kind of events, please invite us. You know, we'll set up a table and we'll, you know, pass those flyers, try to get them engaged, you know. And we can always have all these incredible employers on our side, but we also have to work together to get people to want to participate. And really, you know, trust us and believe in us and just really follow through with the program.
So your office is over here about the Hackburn Street better.
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was anybody else gonna speak up?
No. Thank you.
Okay.
What would the what would the cost be to the county? What would the cost be to the county?
Nothing. We have an agreement that is good for a year and we are liable for the participants. We pay their salary every two weeks. And it really is just, you know, speaking with the employer, you know, building that relationship and placing our views with them. And it's such a three hundred hours. Is the employer's wanting more than one person, then we can definitely place more.
It. And I guess since it's not in our budget, we could actually create positions. For instance, I'm just thinking if someone. We wanted someone to scan documents in the county clerk's office. We could have them come do that.
Yes.
Yeah. And it thinking about that might break my brain right now, but I.
And you said it was up to three hundred hours at what?
A twelve dollars.
Twelve dollars.
There are no more questions I need them. If you all agree to. Yeah. Approving the workforce, work experience, worksite agreement between few counties, work for solutions. I need a motion to approve that.
To prove item five point one.
Okay, motion made by commissioner Sancho on that. Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Sancho on that five point one, do you hear a second? A second, Judge. Second, Commissioner, good silence, all in favor. Approved, thank you.
And do we need one for five point two also? I move to approve item five point two.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Sancho on that five point two, we are second.
A second.
Second, Commissioner, good silence, all in favor. Now we go to item number six. Armored roof for ceiling, if you're coming, just request six point one, consider the correction of finding the circumstances present in all the part of the unincorporated areas of Freeo County that create a public safety hazard that would be I don't worry about these hard words in there, because they're operated by outdoor burning. I talked to a guy when he says it should be. For us to go and implement that a burn ban again. So I need a motion that we all agree on six point one. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Graff on six one six, you do your second.
My second, Judge.
Second, Commissioner, good silence, all in favor.
And Judge, real quick, just to clarify on that, on the burn ban, I get a lot of calls from ranchers about burning on their property, but they tell them, we discussed, what was it, item number eight, that if they followed the burn procedure, that they could, they were still allowed to burn.
There is a way for them to.
Yes.
Okay, now we go to item number seven, Armored roof for ceiling, if you're coming, just request, consider the correction approving donation between ten thousand and fifteen thousand to Knights of Columbus Council eighty-three twenty-seven for allocations for the Community Service Program and repairs for the Knights of Columbus. The Knights of Columbus approached me, they were in dire need of some funds to continue their program, will they rather help a lot of the elderly and whoever needs assistance out there. And I think their building is, in a sense, needs some repairs. And they asked to see if maybe the county could provide some funding from that A R P.
You know, we have a gentleman here speaking on behalf.
Honorable Judge Luna, Commissioners of Freeo County, my name is Daniel Garcia, I'm currently a member of the Knights of Columbus here. Some of the things our organization is founded on, the four principles of charity, unity, fraternity, and patriotism. Charity being the most important one of our organization, and charity means love, means helping our neighbor. And so a lot of things we do, we've done, like wheelchair ramp access repairs, we paint, help paint some houses. We do a lot of raffles whenever, you know, a gentleman or somebody gets sick or cancer or some type of illness, we, we try to, all the brothers donate either pitch in our time, money, or resources. COVID, of, of course, had to separate, we couldn't raise any money, ran into some issues, then along with snowbed and all that, we kind of sustained some damage to our building. So we're trying to see if y'all could help us out in getting some of those repairs in place, and also helping us fund those coats for kids. We do a lot of search programs, you know, the pantry, when they come down, we help distribute some of the food and things like that, raise money for, for those events. Of, I don't have a, I don't have an estimate for the roof repair, it's, it's a minor leak that we have. But of course, any little minor leak of first and time will get worked. So we're trying to get that addressed, we just unfortunately don't have all the funding right now, we do have a plan in place, start getting back on our feet. God willing, if, you know, all this supposed stuff kind of upsides and we can get into it full blast again. Well, like I say, we do, do coats for kids, we do the school supply drives, we do a known neighbor left behind. Some things we don't really, I guess, brag about, we're out there, hey, this is what we're doing. It's more being of humility and humbleness and just trying to do it out of, you know, what the Lord calls us to do. So I'm humbly asking you, if you could please assist us with some, some monetary donations from the county, we would really appreciate it. You got any questions? We are a five oh one, I mean, five one C eight, so we are, we are a nonprofit.
The Knights of Columbus right there across the street from Parsons?
Yes.
How long have you been established or do you know?
Nineteen ninety-five is when that building was purchased by our previous brother. We've been there a while.
Good evening. Kind of Judge Commissioners, again, whatever, whatever can, these are my brother nights here. Whatever help you can provide, even if there's, there's some issues, I know A R P dollars or some of those questions as to how the money can be utilized. But I will say this, of all the communities I've been at, and I've been to at least five or six, I can tell you that this is probably one of the most active items organizations I've seen. They do do a lot for the community, things that, that you don't necessarily see all the time. I've got to get running to another meeting, but I can only say that whatever dollars you do allow or grant, if any, will be put to good use. So, so again, no, it's your decision, but we appreciate any help.
No. Judge, I know that I, I would like to contribute to the Knights as well as the V W, which is on the next act, action, uh, item. What can we do to get, to get money from the A R P to have them qualify?
So that's what I was gonna ask. I reconciled the A R P, but it's to put it, to put it into the adopted budget. The other nonprofits, the contributions that we've made, we've lined them out in the budget for transparency. These two are not included in that, but we do have the electable expense line item that we can pay both donations or contributions to out of the electable expense line item. So I can believe we have about one million dollars in there. And so again, it won't be as transparent as the other, the other lines, but we do have that electable there that we can, again.
If, if we did want to do it out of the A R P funds, if they did qualify, could we do that with the next budget year?
Correct, after October.
After October.
We can make a contribution.
And would that make it more transparent if we were to go that route?
Because I didn't create line items to separate it out, but we do have that one line item that catch all, and then we'll expense line item that, that we can pay out. And then, again, if they request a contribution again next year, next year I can make the line item for both, yeah.
Joseph?
If, if it was, if it was to come out, if it was to come out of the eligible expense item, I know I'm always asking you these questions, but.
I have not thought about it, how it would pertain if it came out of the A R P funds, but again, the problem with, again, and I appreciate everything that the Knights do, I'm a member of multiple service representatives in, in Pierceall, and I, and I love being part of them, and I love what we do for the community, and I'm thankful for all that we do. Problem we run into is giving public funds to a private organization. And again, even though they do public things, they are technically a private organization. So what the law says is for a county to give public funds to a private organization, there has to be certain assurances that that money is going to be used for a legitimate public purpose. And so it would be up for you guys to decide if what they are looking to do is a legitimate public purpose or not. And what kind of guarantees you would need to make sure that that money is spent for a public purpose and not being used for a private.
And is that for both A R P and the, was expenditure, what, not the, uh?
I would think that analysis would, would apply to both situations because they are both public.
So then it would be up to us to determine if it was legitimate public purpose.
To make that, yeah, determination whether or not you would think that was a legitimate.
Can you weigh in on that, Dan?
Yes, I can. Some of the things as far as for the public, it's, uh, it's not, you know, just certain members of the order that get, oh, hey, these, hopefully these kids, it's for, I work with the counselors and I say, hey, give me a list of kids that you know that paying for any coats, or the parents are coming with no jackets or whatever, and so that's how kind of we, how we get the list. And then one of the other things is also the, like, the hall, when we did have the hall available, if somebody needed a medical benefit, we would give them the hall, have at it, use it, raise the funds that you need to help support your family or to get those kind of things going. Um, we, we do work with Habitat for Humanity, I know some of the brothers have gone and done that. We try to get that to do something here in Freeo County or in Pierceall. Just kind of like the waiting game type of deal, that was a little bit for my time. Also, we do the wheelchairs and stuff like that. And so that's kind of like I said, I know Joseph talked about it, but it's for the public, it's usually a facilitation, this is a limitation, hey, can you help us out with a monetary donation, can you help us out with the time or some type of service? We've got multiple service programs, and it's not just limited to the programs that you see on our website or what we have. Anything, I mean, it's helping your community, that's one of the, one of the other pillars as well, to make sure that, you know, we're united in one kind of purpose. But as far as it, I mean, it's open to everybody, it's not just, you know, secluded or like, hey, just these kids are gonna get these coats, or kind of, anybody and everybody's eligible to.
How many, how many members do you have in the?
We have a hundred and thirty-three members on the roster, but you're talking about some gentlemen that are about eighty years old, ninety years old. You're talking, you know, so we eliminate, find out the sixty, about forty of those are, those honor, we call them the honorary members. Active members, we're currently about thirty active members. Uh, some people, a lot of our brothers are in the power line industry, and so they're out there in Louisiana, south, you know, on the purpose, so about give and take, we're thirty members deep that we can actually go and we provide services. I said, a lot of the things we do is raffles, dances, things like that to help whatever family or whatever situation we've been approached with.
I know you do give a battle up to the community itself.
We, but say a few words for the, it's the, something else that we do is we also, for instance, we've done the band drives before to provide bands when it was really hot, near the past, this year, we weren't able to do it because the funds were not available. As the, and then also, anything that we do with regards to raffles, things of that nature, that money, we don't, we don't keep in account. So all that money goes back to the community. For instance, a family that might be in need, or they can't pay their electric bill, they can, whatever the case may be, we, we pay those things for those bands. So just similar things that we do back to.
And we've helped out with the, with the, their names now, kids first, we know we've helped. Yes, we've donated money there and time as well, or some kind of hoodie bag or pumpkin for them to paint, so it's, it's all about community, it's all about. Of what we do.
I think they do a good job. I, I do think. Since it can't come out of this budget, it has to come a. October first, was it? There was a gentleman with NICO at our last conference who requested that if you had questions about whether something might be eligible, they have a direct line with Treasury Department. And with the Treasury Department, he said to contact him direct, and he will give us some answering, something. Probably will be eligible.
Okay.
He said, he said, we may not be able to tell you if everything is eligible, but he did say that we can probably get you pretty close. And you know, but it looks like it will, would not be up there. I would suggest we talk to him.
Okay, so just give us some time to work out the details, to make sure everything's done, and hopefully, hopefully put you back on the, on an upcoming budget, I mean, on a upcoming agenda, whenever we find out a definite answer for you.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, I appreciate time.
So we'll take no action on seven and eight?
Yes. Oh, just for the record, I'll go ahead and request to take no action on number eight as it pertains to the same circumstances.
And action on seven two?
Yes, seven and eight.
The, the gentleman that Commissioner Graff is talking, you know, how we talk about, we were not assigned a consultant like we were for C R F Crystal. So this is, this is the closest that we have, it's in, I, I, what did he say, it's city fielded seventeen?
Seventeen hundred and eighty-four questions, and they had answered him back on eleven hundred and fifty of them, so.
Yeah, so since this is, this is being.
But he got another five or six hundred questions there.
Yeah, and, and, and since it's not the, it's not T M this time, it's the treasury, that's why we don't have this official consultant.
I think there is four of them who work in that office to make those, and they all have someone do.
So I can either go on the Treasury website to see if somebody has asked the same question, in terms of if I can locate, if not, we can't.
It was met something, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get it.
Again, just a little word of caution here. While I do think we give money to organizations that provide public services, I think this is kind of one step a little further than that, and these are fraternal organizations that happen to provide public services. So just be wary of the fact that if we go down that road, there will probably a lot of other organizations that are gonna. Well, I, I mean, again, I think like Rotary Republic, you know, and I'm just thinking, there are going to be other groups that set that precedent, you're gonna have to.
And, and so then is the suggestion that we do some kind of solic- solicitations that we can see what total we'd be looking at or?
Well, I would just be wary of, again.
Coming up with a policy to determine how we, how we're gonna grant it or how we're not.
But I, I would, again, you might want to get away from the idea, I like the idea of you're using the COVID ones to do this because you're not necessarily setting yourself up around annual fund or future, because you get all these other organizations in line, that would be very costly, very.
I, I would like it to be strictly with the A R P ones.
They were gonna say it's not, not something we can mention for anyone. Hopefully, it's not. She looked at the number nine. Animal Air Nevada, Freeo County Court Request. Nine point one, review of Freeo County Commission's scope minutes for July six, seven, eight, twelve, twenty-six times two, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty, twenty-two, twenty-one. Been considered to approve the Freeo County Commission's scope minutes for July six, seven, eight, twelve, twenty-six, times two, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, and twenty, twenty-two.
Judge, I looked over the minutes and I did not see any discrepancies. None of the other commissions have anything to discuss, I'm going to move to a, to approve.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Carlos Solis to approve nine point one, nine point two, do your second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Sancho, in all the favor. Item number ten, my better Freeo County Community Resource Director request, ten point one, consider the action approving title position changes. The Freeo County paid grade scale. Do we have a?
Judge.
Ms. Peters?
Good afternoon, Judge, or good evening, Judge, and Commissioners. Just to be on record, we did a couple of pay grade title changes. And I just, I, I believe you have a copy of that with you. And we made two, six changes on there on the position, positions, which are the facility tech one, facilities tech two, facilities tech three, assistant tax auditor slash collector, the facilities management supervisor, and county road administrator. And those are the, the positions that had title changes. So I wanted to make sure that if this was approved, to go ahead and put this in our employee handbook for this coming year.
Do we have any questions on ten point one? If not, I need a motion.
I move to approve ten point one.
Motion been made by Commissioner Sancho on ten point one, do your second. A second, Judge, second, Commissioner, good silence, all in favor. I'm gonna vote, no, I'm just, I'm gonna vote against.
Mary, did you give me a clean copy to have the court sign, or did you give one to the court, or was that the one you brought by my office the other day?
Uh, that's the one I brought by your office. Yes.
Thought that was because you wanted me to have a copy.
Uh, yes, that was for you to bring by.
On item ten point, did you open?
No, 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 we can go with that. Item ten point two, consider the cash and approving for your county employee handbook revisions, along with approved for your county shares pay grade scale and for your county's pay grade scale to be included in them.
Chief Salinas, you asked for, there was clarification on a couple of items. And, and I just want to go on the record with saying what I think those answers are based on our budget. One of them was, are we moving, I believe there were at least two. I believe there were at least two positions who would have been affected by whether we implement moving them to the middle of the pay grade scale versus starting them at zero. And I, because the, because these things work in tandem with a budget, I think the answer is that they, they started zero. And that affects two positions in this.
Which one are we, which positions, or are you keeping a title?
Building security.
I'm not, I'm not sure which position we're talking about.
Among your staff has more, is, is further into their first year? How many people is that?
That one, we have a few, we had a deputy number three. She's actually currently at fifty, about fifty-one thousand.
So this would, so the, the pay grade wouldn't have affected her.
Well, the pay grade for her is the, basically the base pay is forty-nine, but since she's already over that forty-nine, she is going to stay with her current salary.
So she's unaffected.
Plus the license that she gets, so, and then there's.
What was that, a deputy, what, two or three?
The deputy number three, number three, yeah.
So that means more than eight consecutive years with.
Been here.
That's why she would be elevated to that level.
She stayed, we couldn't take away her salary to bring her down to the, so we left her at her salary and gave, gave her the, I believe she has a master license, so she was given that.
I, I.
I don't think, I think the other one was the, the question with the detention officer clerk maybe. I believe she was another one who's been with the county for many years.
Correct, I believe she started back in twenty-eleven. Uh, she was one of the ones that went over to jail, wrote contracts with the county. Uh, she did work with jail and she was hired on by the county, she came with a lot, a lot of knowledge. So she is a clerk three because of the years of service that she's done for the county. So her, her, actually, she's currently a lot lower than here, but with the new pay grade that the sheriff had put in place, she actually increased about.
You said she's a clerk three?
Clerk three.
But I thought that the clerks weren't covered by the.
Well, no, she's a clerk three slash detention officer, so she will fill in whenever they're short, she will do, she'll go to the back and act as a detention officer.
And then, and I believe the pay grade only affected the shift leaders.
Yes, sir, only, only shift leaders, we're going to see the increase.
So she, so she would be on a.
She's kind of special the way she fell in because she still has her data license, she still can act like a detention officer.
Okay.
So, but her, her position was special.
Okay, so, yeah, no, go ahead.
No, it was just a real quick question, that detention, I mean, the deputy three did have a master certification.
She has a master certification and like, I'm not sure exactly how many years, but I know it's more than eight, for sure.
She also is the designated person to work on Stone Guard.
Yes, Stone Guard, okay, she's our liaison for that program.
So was, was there anything else that we needed to wrap up?
Uh, no, the only thing is I did present a policy, I guess, to go along with it, but I'm not sure, I think Mary might want to make some, want to take a look at it. Um, the, the only thing that I really added was, we talked about the time accruals. Uh, we asked that that be continuous time as opposed to sometime now you leave, you come back, it's, it's continuous time, which I think is kind of self apparent for it. But because it's not there, I don't want it to come up later. Uh, and the, the other deal that I put on there that I want to make sure that you guys are, are okay with is we did talk about the, the milestone achievements or education accruals that could come with that incentive would, would take effect the next approved fiscal year. But I did, it included the caveat, the sheriff may offer, and I'm going to read it how I typed it. Um, the sheriff may authorize on above listed incentive pay based upon the availability of previously budgeted and or unexpended salary funds. And I wanted to make sure y'all were okay with that, but if not, we can, we can, but I, I don't want to muddy the waters.
No, I, 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 it's better to put that on the table, I think, and not pass it and say, hey. Right, realize we passed that.
So I, I tried to think of everything I could, but that's where I'm at.
Yeah.
Any more questions on, on ten point two? If not, I need a motion on ten point two.
And, and, and everyone is okay with the points that Chief Salinas raised? Are they, are they reflected in the budget? I think those are future, uh, they wouldn't be affected by this budget, right?
No, not, not, not at all, and we're just saying for the future, this policy is going to stand, we like for it to stand.
There is one question, anyone who achieves these educational milestones, is there anyone there that has already achieved these?
Uh, yeah, there's, yes, sir, there's probably about four of us that have the, whether it's an intermediate, advanced or master. I do have some deputies that may be, may be achieving it within the next year or two. Uh, so that's a reason we wanted to say, hey, if there is some unexpended funds that we can do that, then let's do it if, if you're approval. But it would be something we'd bring here to Commissioner Ford, obviously. You have a master, Liz, Rusty, and Meyer.
Okay, and with, with two of you, would we say that that's already reflected in your, I'm, I don't know Liz's and Rusty's as well, but between you two, would you say it's reflected in your salary already?
It is, it is, it is accounted for in what we, what we requested and what's been approved.
Okay. I, I think that, I think those are the questions we, that might come up later, so.
I think, I think this is setting a good standard for what we're going to be looking to do with the rest of Field County in the, the upcoming year.
Real, real quick, I'd, I'd like to say that most, most of the men and women we have working are, have basic certificates right now. I believe in order to, and correct me, I believe in order to reach an intermediate, you at least have to have four years in the field.
You can do it too with the correct degree, you've got to have seventeen different courses that require.
So, you know, I'd say eighty percent of the department is sitting at a basic certificate right now, so. But you know, with, with the training we're trying to implement right now, you know, I think it's all going to hinge on their years of service. So the training's there, sometimes it just matter make the time to do it.
Sheriff, I've got a question for who's that training, these deputies on these chases that you all have every day now?
I didn't hear you do that.
Who's training these deputies that you have these chases almost every day now, I'm thirty-five?
Who's training them? Well, I mean, we, they've all went through spike training through TCO. That's the easiest way to stop a pursuit, just to deflate their tires.
Yeah, because I know you had one on Saturday night, I believe it was Sunday, the spike, they missed the vehicle.
Right.
That's all I have for you. There's no more questions, I need a motion on ten point two. Were you going to, Mary, something you said?
Um, I just wanted to see if, if the changes that, or if the additions that Chief Salinas were talking about were included in this most recent iteration of the policy, the handbook.
Yes, sir, I believe they were.
So, thank Mary.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, actually, they are, Joseph.
Yes, thank you.
Let me ask Crystal real quick on the, on these increases. Do you see next year, after that, that the month is going to be there for the increases?
Uh, currently, right now, what has helped funded with the salaries was the abandoned vehicles. If they continue with the abandoned vehicle, help fund their operating budget, it would help fund their salary. So if they could continue being out there, um, working, it, it will, it will continue for them.
And, and not only that, opening the jail full time.
Correct, there's, there's unforeseen revenue, again, because we have never had a full running facility. There's extra revenue that we are waiting to see, so once we start seeing that revenue, we don't know how much we'll see, but I'm, I'm guaranteed it will, we'll see revenue that we weren't expecting.
Or, or fewer, fewer expenditures.
Correct.
Again, there's no more questions, I need a motion on ten point two. Motion to be made by Commissioner Graff on ten point two, do your second. Second, second Commissioner Carlos Salas on the favor. I'm going to vote, I'm not going to vote on this one. Your, yes. Now we go to eleven, I have a first to market for Field County Auto Request. Eleven point one, considers the Gatchan and approving three security line agreements with Medina Electric to add schedule lighting at the Hilltop subdivision in Duly, Texas, including the cost of ten dollars and ninety cents per month for each additional one-time payment. Five hundred and ninety, nine dollars, twenty-four cents for construction costs, exact locations are as follows.
Yeah, Commissioner, this is still an ongoing process with Medina Electric for the Hilltop subdivision. I know the first time this budget or the agenda was back in April. Um, so we're starting to see the applications come through. Uh, this is basically this application to add it to our current standing account. And for, uh, items number one through three, the monthly charge for each of them will be ten dollars and ninety cents. That will be added to our current account with Medina Electric. Uh, with the number one corner of I H thirty-five and County Road forty-six oh three Barber Street, that did have an additional construction cost of five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Um, I do expect to see more as, as they're getting through each project. I, I believe we had first put six of them on here, six locations.
Uh, seven, I believe, was it seven? I think it was one and then we brought six more.
Okay, so these are the first three of them. So we're going to say it's someone on Friday that they're asking for the, so as they're getting closer to their projects, they're, they're sitting over the agreement. So this is just again, to add this to our, our current account with Medina Electric.
Okay. I need a motion on eleven one then.
I'd like to make a motion on eleven one and eleven two.
Okay, motion to be made by Commissioner Essenson on eleven one, eleven two, do your second. My second, second Commissioner Carlos Salas on the favor, approve. Thank you, if I may, Commissioner Essenson, I'm surprised that we're meeting later on with the text up and that it was brought up to my attention, maybe we can get together on the bridge on thirty-five. They, they don't have any lights out there.
Okay.
And see if they can help the, the deal with those lights.
That would be great.
Yes. And number twelve, I will crystal market for Field County Auto Request, twelve point one, consider the action to approve the budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty, Field County budget listed below, Crystal.
Judge, Commissioner, Judge, this is the request that you came into my office and requested to move some funding within your budget to cover the over budget on your part-time clerical line item. Um, and with the last payroll that we decided on Friday, it did increase the overage on that line item. Um, and you're actually wanting to pay for up to the seventeenth, yeah, the seventeenth of September. So again, we are increasing that line item by eighteen hundred dollars to cover the overage and to also again, get your part timer paid up to the seventeenth. Um, and included in that is the payroll taxes, the workers' comp and the unemployment taxes. Um, and the judge, their request to take these funds, the funding out of the travel mileage expense, so a total cost of two thousand dollars, two thousand eight, two thousand, I'm ready to go home, two thousand dollars.
Dollars and sixty-one cents.
Sixty-one cents, um, to be moved from the judge's budget to the part-time clerical line item.
Um, do I understand that after the seventeenth, then there, there won't be budget for the part timer?
Correct, we, we only budgeted enough to pay her up, I think, I believe, uh, judge, your request for each week, that's twenty-four hours per week. So we're going to try to get her to twenty-four hours, uh, for this week, twenty-four hours for next weekend, and that's it.
And that, that's the understanding too, that's it after seventeenth?
Yes.
She should return with a new budget.
Right, okay.
If there's no questions, uh, I'll help me, I need a motion on twelve one and twelve two. Thank you, motion to be made by Commissioner Graff on twelve one, twelve two, do your second. My second, second Commissioner Carlos Salas on the favor, approve, thank you. I'm thirteen, I'm a customer of Field County Auto Request, thirteen point one, consider the action to approve the budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, Field County budget listed below.
Judge and Commissioner, this is to cover the merits that were given to offices at the beginning of the year. I believe we had some department, District Clerk's Office, Treasurer's Office and the Highway Patrol Office. They were given merits, um, throughout the, again, throughout the budget year and, and a total of the salaries for everybody who receiving merit was eleven thousand, three hundred dollars and thirty-four cents. Um, I included the payroll taxes, retirement contribution, retirement supplement, workers' comp insurance, unemployment insurance. Um, and what I did basically was doing, in, in the background of the budget, I did a journal entry. Um, I did not want to do a budget amendment because I didn't want to reduce their budget. So what I did was, did a journal, a journal entry to move those funds over to the A R P funds. Uh, the, the salaries part of the budget, and then now I'm bringing in the eligible expenses of the total of thirteen thousand four seventy-nine up to cover the, the personal services in that budget. Um, and again, uh, this is reducing the eligible expense for the American Rescue Plan Fund to one million, a little over one million and seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, again, that's a district that were already given for certain endpoint.
Okay. I'll need a motion on thirteen one, thirteen two, please. Motion to be made by Commissioner Graff on thirteen one, thirteen two, do your second. My second, second Commissioner Carlos Salas on the favor, approve, thank you.
And just real quick, Chris, just to clarify, it was sixty-eight cents at the end. He says sixty-four, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, number fourteen, I will crystal market for Field County Auto Request, fourteen point one, consider the action to approve the budget commitments for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty, for Project Field County budget listed below, Crystal. Good afternoon.
Judge and Commissioners, I did get with, uh, Chief Salinas regarding his budget and covering, um, a lot of his over, uh, budget line items in his budget. So if you do look at this budget, it's pretty extensive. Um, we are bringing in from other funding budgets, a total of eighty-nine thousand dollars to cover his budget, uh, starting with salaries deputies. Currently, they are over budgeted, so I need to put money in there to cover that line item. Um, we are bringing in forty-five thousand two hundred. Um, and from that line item, we're bringing in prisoner medical, we'll bring you about fifteen thousand dollars from there. Purchases A B V, we're going to be, um, bringing fifteen thousand dollars from there and equipment, other purchases of fifteen thousand two hundred, so that totals to forty-five thousand two hundred. That should help cover that over budget. Um, what we're also banking on is workers' comp, um, there's about forty, forty thousand dollars. I, I think currently we need about sixty-six thousand dollars by the end of September. So with that forty thousand dollars staying in the workers' comp, that should cover that overage. And again, there is, we had a lot of, in December, we had a lot of deputies who did, uh, separate from the county, so we had a lot of payouts. Uh, we had about four big payouts from January through current, um, about, we were looking at about ten thousand payout, ten thousand dollar payouts to, to, uh, the overtime, uh, or comp time. So again, this is trying to, to remedy the salaries deputies, uh, budget, again, jailers, dispatchers, of the other line items are, are okay. We were, we're worried about. Uh, moving on, we do need to bring in about fifty thousand dollars from contingencies, and we, we do this normally every year for the sheriff, but you're bringing in money from contingency to cover inmate housing. Uh, we are bringing about fifty thousand dollars. Um, we are paying between forty to sixty thousand, uh, a month for inmate housing. Um, so we are going to go over a little this year, so we're going to bring in fifty thousand dollars, that should help for the month of August and September. Um, and we're bringing, uh, those, again, those funds from contingencies, motor vehicle, they are over budget, uh, about fourteen thousand dollars, I'm bringing fifteen thousand dollars from building improvements, um. That is building improvement, that is the money that's left over from the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that Commissioner Court allotted from contingencies for the jail projects. They have about seventeen thousand dollars, but of the seventeen, they're using fifteen thousand dollars to cover the motor vehicle repairs. Also, to cover the over budget and uniform expenses. And battery tires and tubes, that's nine hundred dollars from battery tires and tubes, uniform expenses is five hundred dollars, I'm using telephone and other communications to cover those over budget of fourteen hundred dollars. They are over budget on radio electronic equipment. About twenty, I think it's twenty five thousand six hundred and something, some change, so I'm just bringing in twenty five thousand seven hundred. I am moving line item of funding from seventeen hundred from telephone and other communications, three thousand from purchases non capitalized. And this is, this, this one to come from, the radio electronic is coming out of courthouse security. Seventeen hundred from telephone and communications coming out of sheriff's, but it purchases non capitalized, it's coming out of courthouse security, that's three thousand. Courthouse security building structures, that's eighteen thousand. Courthouse security conference and association, that's a thousand. Courthouse security education and training, that's a thousand. Courthouse security meals and lodging, that's a thousand, that will give you that twenty five thousand seven hundred to cover in the radio electronic equipment. The other overages we are having in that budget is the equipment rental expenses, moving in five thousand to cover that, that over budget postage and freight. Bringing in seven hundred to cover that over budget and data processing, they're over by three thousand five hundred. So I'm bringing and equipment, other purchases, that should cover the nine thousand two hundred and those over budget line items. Does my transport have any question?
If there's no questions, I need a motion on.
I'd like, I'd like to say something real quick. I think what really hurt our budget was the, the employees that were terminated or decided to leave on their own, the comp time. And I believe comp time is time and a half, correct?
Correct, they could get paid up time and a half.
I mean, we had employees that were up to three fifty, four hundred hours of comp time. So.
Are you trying to control that right now?
Yes. And vehicle repairs.
All right. I don't know, the questions, I need a motion on fourteen one and fourteen two. Okay, motion being made by Commissioner Graff on fourteen one, fourteen two to your second.
Second.
Second Commissioner Sancion, all in favor, approved, thank you. And fifteen, I will possess and show your county commission petition for request for fifteen point one, discuss take action and entering into. Into local agreement with Elmo area council of government for grant writing services to apply for the outdoor recreation and tourism funding opportunity. Through the economic development administration, mission.
This item was on here to apply for a grant for the pond improvement project. It's probably the third or fourth time I put it on the agenda and it just keeps slipping through my fingers. Our ability to execute this. Depends on having some personnel here, and so rather than us. Trying, trying to execute it without the data and the executive summary and the budget that we need. I ask that we take no action on this for now.
Okay. I have number sixteen, I will possess and show your county commission petition for request. Sixteen point one, consider the caution and rescinding both approving memorandum, memorandum of understanding between pure con and the Dilly Independent School District. For collection of property taxes by the free county taxes as a collector that was executed in July twenty six, twenty twenty one.
If you recall, the county agreed to take over three entities collections from the appraisal districts, so they're now in Anna Alene's office. We sent each of them a draft of an M O U. Their delinquent tax attorney, who actually was Ronald Rocha, sent some revisions. Dilly I S D signed the original draft, not the revised draft. So this was actually, we've been trying to correct this since June. There's still some, some moving pieces, so what this agenda item does is approves the same version of the draft that they signed. We want to have this wrapped up because our budget revenue depends on it. This is, this is gonna fund to Anna's office. They may come back and revise the agreement to match the other two entities, but until then. We're okay with the draft, but there were, I shouldn't speak for Joseph, but Joseph's okay with the draft that they signed. It was actually revisions that they requested that they didn't, that they didn't sign, so.
Yeah, revisions were made by line marker, they guaranteed they would have access to collect the link with fine, so I'm, I'm comfortable with either one. If they do come back at a later date with wanting to sign the revised contract, will that have any repercussions on our budget?
It will not have budget repercussions. And I think we would just sign an amendment, right, Joseph?
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? All right, so I move to approve item six point, sixteen point one, sixteen point two and sixteen point three.
Okay, motion may be back, Commissioner, I sent you on that sixteen one, sixteen two, sixteen three to your second.
The second judge.
Second Commission Gonzalez, all in favor, approved, thank you. Seventeen, coming out of your county, building maintenance supervisor request seventeen point one. Consider the action opening seal bid, receive but specified deadline for the roof building improvements for the county buildings located below and pit of Texas. Building four hundred, four oh four and four tens off the con. And item two, building four eleven, East Plaza Street.
This is an item that we felt to put on the agenda last. We have, we have received two bids. And this is for roof improvements are building across the street. We about do an operation, egg relax and extension on.
Yeah.
According to a, a train that sent it come out of newspaper, well, to turn these bits into this crystal, is that correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay. And he persists here, the office located at five hundred east, Southern Door Street, of yours own. At the new block, I was sitting outside the office till three o'clock, returned the bits in, and I asked Miss Chris whether, at least anybody else turned bit. In order to visit, is that correct, Chris?
Correct, that, that they, that Mr. Monsted did a return to my office and asked if anybody else had been in. At that time, he was feeling bitter. There was an email bid that was submitted to the county engineer. Which I was not aware of until Friday morning when it was delivered in my office. I did speak with her about that, and she forwarded me the email that was stated that it was received that Thursday before three o'clock P M. I believe the, the issue is was the bid notice found.
Correct, I believe it's a security that was not done at her office at three o'clock, the bitch would be turned close and I'm open actually bitter. And obviously, a sealed bid is not a move. Now, if y'all think it's all right to do that, it's fine, I'm not for it, but in reality, that bitch not be here. But.
You guys do have the ability to reject all bids and have everybody bid. People worried about that being a legal issue that's gonna cause a hangout later.
But, I mean, I prefer to follow the letter of the law. We said that it had to be delivered to the otter's office by three, I, I think we have to follow that. Now, we don't necessarily have to read bid without opening the bids. I know one of the thing, am I right? I mean, we could still open it. Look to make sure that it has the things that we need.
You could, but if your plan is to reject the bid, I would just, I would say it's probably a safer bet just to not touch it to begin with. But if you're going to consider the bid, then yes, you have to.
Well, only reject the bid that didn't follow the instructions.
Correct, and again, while I, I think. Again, I don't know what things were said by the engineer to this person who accepted the bid, and I don't know, I obviously can't weigh the legal ramifications of statements of a county employee to a bidder. So I, I, I really don't know what to tell you because I don't know all the facts.
Follow along the letter, like you said, it's still clearly stated, turn it off at three o'clock, will be rejected, back to the bill, which is understandable, now like again, y'all hold it up, so you believe it, not the way it goes.
So let me ask you this, does it say hand delivered to the person?
The bid notice does say, say that it needs to be delivered, it does not say hand delivered. In other cases, we receive FedEx or, or UPS, but it was, it was sent to our, my office first.
An email was not seen.
No. No, again, if we're gonna follow the law, then I think we need to follow the law, and it wasn't turned in on time, but I think we should accept it.
But here, here's the other thing, we may, I think, I think what's, what's in question is opening one of the bids doesn't guarantee that we accept the bid.
That's correct.
And there are a few things that I, I know that we look for. Just to be, just to be clear, sir. So I, I know one of the, one of the things that we've learned on roofing that we look for is a water tight warranty. It, and so I'm not gonna ask you, I'm not gonna ask you right now if that's in your bid, but.
I know, I mean.
Yeah.
With honesty, everything you're looking for, it's in my bid, I'm just in the gentleman's there as well.
Yeah.
It's just the fact that getting turned in time, I don't think it's right, you know, it's like. I mean, that's just what I'm thinking, y'all can accept it, y'all can do whatever you want, it's fine, hopefully you can get some work, you know, it's no big deal, this is the fact.
I, I, I understand, and I, I actually take the same position. And then, and Commissioner Bella. I know you had mentioned at one point. Ruppers, we, when we voted to advertise to the bid, did you contact whoever you wanted to contact? Okay, and, okay, so, so, so we did that process, correct, all right. My, my stance is we should open the bid that followed the instructions as we.
We're done.
And return the other, yes.
Yes.
It comes down to one, dude. Now, as I was saying, this is for the building across the street and the WIC and image and mark. First one is K J Oil, or you bid, it's K J Oilfield Services, L C. Which I believe that you.
You've got a bid for each building, Tom?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Broken, broken down.
Okay.
Yes, you should, yes, good, yes. Okay, over here across the street, we got building address that four ten. South pecan. That one. Price with insulation is a forty six thousand nine hundred. Price without insulation is a forty two thousand nine hundred.
Those buildings do not have insulation on top, you got normal insulation like a house, I mean, this is some commercial building. I was just to put insulation on the top, well, figure out, you know.
I, I think, did you, did you have an opportunity to inspect the buildings?
Then the other half of the building is. With insulation is forty seven thousand nine hundred forty six dollars. Price without insulation is forty three thousand one hundred ninety six. Forty three thousand one ninety six. Lastly, at the WIC, image mark building, addressed at four eleven. Prices at seventy thousand. That, and on what I, looks. This is removal of old ten. On material label, have a one year warranty.
Does it, does it say what kind of warranty?
It does not.
It's supposed to. Twenty year warranty, they were. And I believe that, Thomas, I don't know. Needs to go back there, it needs to be raised at least eighteen inches in order to create a water. There's somebody with instructional, I don't know what it is, but the roof is the last completely flat, you know, that was my leak. But I think it needs to be raised at least eighteen inches, we have a fifty foot of span, so that'll allow enough water to flow in, otherwise, I will not touch it.
Yeah.
But that's included there.
And, and, and. It's gonna remind me how, how the warranty worked in the district court, why, why our warranty didn't apply up there. And I, and I think it was, was it a labor and materials warranty also? Or was it, it was only materials? Yeah.
Yes, that's right, it was only materials, and so we were finding was. The gentleman who would come down was from out of town, and he charged his labor, he charged hotel stay for D M and any equipment that he needed to rent. So it didn't. It, it seemed like we were putting more money into something that we, we thought we had a warranty on.
Okay.
He actually charged you to come back to where his warranty?
Three days worth. And it leaked, and it leaked the next day.
That's the reason why I'm, I'm, I'm stopping doing this, but I know there's a lot of flaws going on, a lot of things that are going on, way overcharged. And all those prices, the great prices, that all right there was nonsense, they should have measured out certain, as a matter of fact, issue could come back and pay for damages. I mean, that pretty much the world.
We, we have not used that company since.
By the way, who care, care and anger and other insurance, I got office compensation, safety program.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of any, anything else that we look for. In the roof projects.
Mr. Marcus, this is including removing the old ten and disposing of it yourself.
That's equipment, everything, no, I do want to say that we are out about maybe six to nine months on material. Due to the COVID again, you know, so the guy we were, we didn't work for you guys. You know, by the way, we had started a lot of six, seven months on some mature side. And I, and I, and I don't need any money so far. Made probably a portion for material, if not, I can, I can pretty much. Finance is a whole thing.
Do you think that the, I'm not sure you're the person to ask, but I'm gonna ask you anyway, the six to seven months on a material, is that affecting everybody? The reason I ask that is that the issues in at least one of these buildings are, you saw the building process. I mean, it just pools in there, so if we have another wet year.
Well, if, if I do get on any of these, I will put what they call blue. And it's gonna be a semi watertight roof, because the way it is right now, you can't walk in there. Your people won't do it, I mean, it's bad.
Yeah.
So if I do, I, I'm not gonna guarantee you are not going in. So, uh, if I do, I, I'm not gonna guarantee you are not going in, if I want to leave you at the problem by solving them, what they call blue. It'll get so tight and, and hopefully hold, uh, if we get a bad wind or whatever. And again, everything will be done and working on that matter, which is the rate of water is the season coming up, so it's fine, it'll be slow.
Tell me the people that working out there, what are they doing? The people that working out there, the way what are they doing? What are they doing? They, they, they are, they installed the roof, the top, they, they did the seal type. Uh, they didn't use screws, they did the seal. Oh, that's, that's a, that's a, the. Well, on the addition, the addition on the front of the building, they did, because it was an addition they added, so it was, it needed roofing. So yes, they did just the addition part, nothing, nothing else. It has its slope, it has its slope, yes, sir. They, they, they actually raised it to have it slope.
That's the one, you've been in seventy eight thousand? So Chris, I didn't get any money from the insurance.
For across the street. Um, and we, I'm gonna reality slash week, uh, back when we had the house on, back in twenty thirteen. We received the funding, I think, uh, from the insurance. In twenty fourteen. But the projects, um, were never completed. I believe the construction was gonna start. Start on that, but then there was a separation with the county engineer where a lot of the project is gonna be going more. Cause that was, I, I believe that was one of the ones that, that had. We already did pay ready insurance for both locations.
So we spent already on those budgets.
They probably just went back into the research, we see the funding from, the funds from the insurance. We, we put it in the revenues and they just.
So, so typically when we open the bids, we don't, or I should say more recently, our process has been, we don't accept them that day. We actually bring them back or review them, so. I'm, I'm okay to bring this back and we haven't done any work with your companies, that, that right? Yeah, so, so what we would do is just check references and, and, and bring it back, that's, that's my.
I was actually gonna ask Tommy.
Waiving the few, fireman's park rental fee at the request of Ismaela Cano for September nineteen, twenty twenty one. Barbecue plate sale will be held to assist in medical expenses for a COVID patient. If approved, then we fund rental payment made. This is a. One of my part time clerk. Oh, I think, I want to say that the, the person here passed away, but they were still gonna continue with the plate sale after hoping the. So was asking if we could, uh. Way the fees for the fireman's part. Okay, thank you. Motion they made by Commissioner Graff to waive the fees on number eighteen or second. Second Commission of Cursalis on her favor, approved. Twenty, I don't know if you're gonna just request twenty point one, consider the action and participating in a global opium settlement. And approve the settlement but participation forms in the Texas term sheet. There's one about that opioid number. They send, uh, well, just been.
Best I can tell, there is an opiate settlement that the Attorney General has been working on, they're asking for all counties to join in it. And which we would be looking to receive a payout, I believe that money would be subject to the term. Of use, but part of it will be subject to terms and any part of it would not be. Um, it's not necessarily a guarantee upon the viewer's see. Nineteen thousand nine hundred fifty four dollars. For combating the opioid.
I think we had this on here before, we, we.
We had a private law firm trying to hire. Little different than this is the public effort.
And we, we figured we'd get a, only a couple of dollars of a settlement, so we didn't bother now that there's a number attached. It's a little more attractive.
Would that, would that cause any time or cost on our behalf?
If you have no questions, I need a motion on twenty point one or twenty point two. I move judge. Motion they made by Commission of Cursalis on twenty point one, twenty point two, their second. Second Commission of Graff for the favor, approved. We're going to item twenty one, Roxier SFP, if you're coming to any requests, discussion regarding the drainage study at Carnival thirty three fourteen and somebody gonna pick.
We did hire, I was gonna go ahead and do a drainage study for Canyon thirty three fourteen. And which is Gold French Road. Um, um, it is a kind of long, uh, report, I'm just gonna read some of the highlights. Uh, to give her ready, a better idea of what we, we looked at. So the project is located within the San Miguel watershed, which just discharges specifically into Choke Canyon reservoir. The overall, uh, existing drainage patterns flow primarily from northwest to southeast. Currently, we have, uh, existing stormwater structures, we have three sixty inch corrugated pipe metal cross, uh, crossing. The roadway. And in the hydraulic eight model of existing conditions, which shows that the three sixty inch CMP culverts crossing. They have significant low water, uh, conveyance capacity, it's easily overtopped by the one year event. And so one of the, one of the proposals for this design, uh, recommendation is. And, and they proposed to include improvements that, that would remove the three sixty inch CMPs. And would install five ten by eight multiple box culverts, which would allow us to have a ten foot lane with a two foot. Offset in each direction. Improved by headwalls, side slopes and roadway protection against undermining and erosion, so no curbs, no sidewalks, but. We are talking about, uh, metal, the metal being guard fence along the edges. To give you an idea of how much water flows through there, uh, the hydraulic analysis. Determine that the peak discharges from the San Miguel Creek watershed, it's, it's a drainage area of approximately. Uh, three hundred and seventy three square miles, so a little over two hundred and thirty eight thousand acres. And that's why we get so much water and, and issues through this particular drainage structure. Me jump to the back. Okay, so additionally, we have problems because the existing drainage structure appears to be controlled by the outlet. So the downstream right away condition is the one that's impacting the bridge the most. A lot of it because we, we, uh, installed this, this, these culverts in that area. And then as, uh, these heavy rains come through and wash materials downstream, we built a dam downstream. So now that backs up more into our over. Really, and, and they didn't address it here in this report, but if we do go into design, I would ask that we go clean up the downstream structure or else. We're just gonna have that dam backup either way. So, and, and like I said, it didn't address it here, but. I will tell you, we do need to go get the material that's left at the bottom of the creek or we'll, we'll still end up having a problem. Um, one of the first things the engineering firm looked at was, uh. We could easily go in and put in a hundred and fifty foot long bridge that would help us get out of the water. Um, and be good for, for the one year storm. That would cost us about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and I said, we don't have it, go back and look at the drawing board. And so they came back and they said, okay, the next thing we could look at is, uh. Six, uh, multiple box culvers, so it says six, but it has five. No, it says five, uh, box culvers, the ten by six barrels, uh, with a proposed roadway of the twenty six foot. Uh, face to face, and they gave me the cost comparison for that one, and I said, no, it's, it's not gonna be enough for us. So then they gave us a, uh, another option for the five ten by eight boxes, and that one comes out to. Three hundred and forty two thousand. Five ten by eight boxes. So we went through, uh, two or three iterations, um, the, the other iteration being that, that if we just went out there and said. We're gonna replace the six, the three sixty inch, uh, corrugated metal pipes out there, that would still cost us two hundred and forty three thousand dollars. So for a hundred thousand dollars more, what you're getting is, is a, a bigger ability, a greater. Ability to handle the water that's coming through on the small, on the small rains. The big events, you're still gonna have overtopping, but it won't last as long because you'll have better drainage through the, uh, through the box culvers.
Does the box culvert get us back on the bridge?
It does.
If we stay with the pipe culvert, it will not go back on the bridge.
It will not, right. So when Roden Bridge went in to replace these culvert, replace the bridge with these culverts, we did not follow. And the off system bridge requirements. And the reason, I'm gonna tell you, a lot of the reason this one is back on my, top of my list is because we didn't go in and put guard rail either. So at this time, uh, it is very easy to run off the road into. In, into the, the creek. And right now, yeah, we're at low water, it, it probably wouldn't be harmful, but when it's flowing, it'll just take the cars away. So that's why it makes it at the top of the list. It, it's a big structure. Uh, guardrails inadequate, um, and, and we're, and we can't get it replaced by text out because we've already touched it. So it, it's, uh, so go back in with the box culverts with the plan sheets. We submit them to text out with the four bridge number, they'll give us a bridge number this time.
That's the one on open.
And this is the one we discussed in the.
We can fix that for you. Right, this was the one, one of the ones that was prioritized, and, and, and like I said, it's made because of the water that goes through there, we're, we're talking about lots of water. Right, right. Now, and I'm not saying it's not gonna overtop. Uh, again, they, they put a bridge in here that, uh, it, it would overtop with a really, really heavy rain for like a day or two. But we can't afford to do that. So we need to have a bridge, it's gonna get us by most of the time. And then allow, allow the water to receive and, and be okay with it. Um, so then you're gonna ask me, where are we getting the money? Cause I don't, I don't like to come over here without knowing what we're gonna get. Um, not on that sheet, Commissioner, here, take one and pass it down, please, thank you. It was one of the projects we looked at for being funded by. And this project list, uh, again, we can update it as needed, uh, projects one, two, and three. Well, one and two. Three, four, okay, so if you notice, uh, County Road twenty four ten was project number one, and we talked about that last time. Which, uh, at the time, we went ahead and approved three and four, which, which are the next steps to getting twenty four ten. This is the same way. Number two is done, that's what we just read, County Road thirty three, uh, fourteen. And if we're gonna proceed with bridge replacement, we'll have to do the design and, um, construction. So you'll see that number two refers to five and six. And when we put that into the chart and go all the way across to the right, we talk about the funding, um, again, it's an eighty twenty split. And so you'll see that we do have the funding to cover everything from design to construction, as long as our, our estimates are good. Uh, right now. And, and even we will have a buffer of about three hundred and forty thousand dollars at the bottom. So from that one million dollar grant, you get two bridges with some money left over. And, and that, and then I would tell you, um, probably don't. Don't designate it anywhere, I would say leave it there, because if your construction cost comes in high, well, then you'll have some money to cover that, that bridge. So I think we're funded, so unless, again, you wanna put those funds somewhere else, that's fine too. So, so the next step after this, when we just talked about discussing this portion of it, the next step after this would be to. Execute a supplemental work authorization to get Posniki Camario to do the design. It's actually agenda item number twenty five, except that we listed the wrong engineering firm, so we will bring that back for next Commissioner's Court. We're a team, so we have it on here wrong, um, but like I said, it. We can bring it back next time, and just again, uh, this updated list to text that. I can go, if, if you're okay with me submitting it again, I'm going and submitting to text out and tell them, this is what we have for the plan. Uh, put it on file, and then as we get billed, we can build text out, uh, our reimbursement, our eighty percent.
And then we, you were talking about adding or, or putting the money towards something else. Um, I don't think we have to do that, the reason is we have a pool of projects, right? At a, any pool of money, so whether we're putting the grant money toward this or something else. It's, it's, it's just almost technical, right? Because we're, we're, we're saving overall, either way. So I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with this.
Okay, well then I'll go ahead and, and resubmit that back to text out again, at any point if we wanna change it, we can. We can change the list, but otherwise, they'll have this, and, and there's a page two that I didn't give you, but on their page two, they sign off that they've received it and they approve it. And then as they get the bills from Crystal, they go ahead and just reimburse the bills. And, and again, that was just a discussion item.
Okay, we'll go down to twenty two, Roxier SFP, if you're coming to any requests, twenty two point one, because consider the action and accepting. And enacting it, the third amended few economy conference room rules and regulations.
Um, I'm gonna ask that we bring this back for next meeting, and the reason, uh, is because. It was not supposed to be the third amended, uh, rules for the conference room. It, the, uh, several months back, Commissioner's Court. We are having an issue because we have a policy for parks and we have a policy for conference room. But we don't have a policy for any of our other facilities, so, uh, we've been together with AgriLife and, uh, tried to combine all of those policies into one policy. So you'll see that when we come back with this item, it'll be a facilities, do you remember what I called it, facilities agreement? I think it's called a facilities agreement. And it'll cover all the parks, all the buildings, the conference room, everything will be under. And it'll cover all the parks, all the buildings, the conference room, everything will be under one umbrella. So, so it was, it's not supposed to be the third amended conference room rules. We'll have, uh, we'll be void, we'll void or will, I don't know what that word is. We void the previous policies.
Or rescind.
They're rescinded, I don't think. I think this just replaces previous policies. Well, there's two policies and now we're going down to one and we're renaming it. Uh, but again, we, we've had several meetings, probably, uh, six or seven. Let me bring this back when it's all cleaned up and has the right name.
It was just the language. What do we, what do we call that?
Oh, I think we went to facilities, rules and regulations.
You know, it's, I was gonna say, nevermind. I didn't realize it was six thirty.
Uh, but yeah, it, it, it's just not ready for today. Let me, let me bring it back.
Okay. Let's go around twenty-three, Rexier CP, if you're coming in your request, twenty-three point one, considered the action and approving of the resolutions pending permits to US Energy Development. For to lay board construct and maintain it one four inch pipeline operator fifty PSI and County Road forty-seven fifty-seven, you'll ever wrote right away for a total permit fee of five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Judge. We've seen this previously, uh, maybe two meetings ago. US Energy Development submitted a permit for us to execute and they were missing a, well, we, well, I, I call it exhibit A, but it, it was pretty much a, a side plan to show us uh, the elevation of the road versus the elevation of their, uh, casing. Just to make sure that they're gonna put it exactly where they're gonna put it in at the depth they're supposed to fit. So if attorney is satisfied with the plot, the, we didn't call it flat, we just called them the diagram. If he's satisfied, then the, the permit should be completed at this point.
So I'll need a motion on twenty-three point one and twenty-three point two, please. Motion being by Commissioner Graff on twenty-three, one, twenty-three, two, to her second. Second commissioner, in favor, approved, thank you. I have twenty-four, Roxier CP, if you're coming in your request, twenty-four point one, consider the action and approving a utility permit to valid telephone call, call up and company for replacing every fiber up the cable under the replacement bridge on County Road twenty-five hundred side of the road. That's something that'll be for a wave feed. There's a line that's having to be replaced due to coming, bridge replacement.
I think Joseph changed my wording, but you know what? I think I know what he meant. Um, so basically the bridge that, on the off system bridge program, the bridge that text out is currently replacing on County Road twenty-five hundred. Um, part of the, part of the cost is relocating utilities out there. Um, we've agreed on every utility out there except the fiber optic line, which I said was okay. And text out says, no, it doesn't meet our requirements. We don't wanna do that. So they're, they're going to make the fiber optic line go even deeper than they are now, uh, quite a bit deeper, same place, just a lot deeper. Um, and they asked me if, well, they would need a permit. And I said, yes, they're gonna need a permit. But because it's our project, I would like to, uh, ask the commissioner's court, uh, waive the permit fee, uh, but we still will be out there to inspect the work.
And again, the reasoning behind that is they wouldn't have to fix it if we had a case for rebuilt.
Right. It, it's our road, our project and doing it for us technically, uh, through, through, or through the oversight of text out.
Okay.
Motion being back commissioner graph, like twenty-four, one, twenty-four, to waive the fees for valid telephone. To her second, second. Second, the commissioner, in favor, approved, thank you. And twenty-five, Joseph, you said you're gonna wait on that one?
Yes, I made a typo.
Number twenty-six, Rexier CP, if you're coming in your request, discussion regarding the progress of Dilly Annex and we're building improvement projects.
I wanted to, uh, update you on the current project we got going on. The Dilly Annex project of the roof in, in I can repairs that, uh, that we, that will be done, that this project will be done by the end of this week. Uh, based, the contract stated that it would start September the ninth. The action started August the twenty-third, so two weeks. Uh, and from August twenty-third to this Friday, we, four weeks. Our goal, and not just with Dilly Annex, but with WIC two, uh, our goal was to be done mid-September. Get it in for this, this new year. I'm very happy that we're there.
This, next, the, the work on the annex two was impressive. I mean, you can, you can see from the photos, um, in person, it, it really looks even better. And
Go down there and take a look.
The crew is very professional. Um, you could see all the safety precautions that they took. And, um, they even brought their own porta potty, even use our, our bathroom, so. Yeah.
And the second set of photos is the wig that's split up and just got the addition. And then, uh, three, five, it starts with the storage in the back. That one they started in July of nineteen. That one took longer. About eight weeks, nine weeks, project. And again, the ultimate goal was to be done and built by, in this, this, which we did. We got that, then, uh, like I said, by the end of this week, both of these projects will be complete. Uh, Thursday, Friday, I will do a walkthrough with the contractors. And, uh, confirm anything that, that I'm not happy with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don, good report. Thank you.
Uh, we, the Camino Real over, uh, Dilly Annex, uh, which was questioning certificate of occupancy. Uh, we, we did the application for inspection. Actually was done this morning. It was very pleasing to see that it was a very minor, uh, to an AC line. I just, uh, it was, it was very, it was very pleasing to see that, 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 uh, inspection will pass. Once we, once I address those issues. He's always, I mean, very minor. But so it's, it's good. And, and thanks to you all. They need to look pretty.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
And twenty-seven. I hope you're doing enough, your kind of judge request, consider the action, approving for your county back vaccine incentive program guidelines. We are, have some guidelines I didn't really listen to.
I look over.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Judge, I was gonna say, I, I really like, um, the guidelines that your office came up with. I would propose one change, which is that this vaccine incentive program is runs from October first, twenty twenty-one through October thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. It's, it's, it's one month.
Yes.
And we started tomorrow. Um, is there any reason we can't do that? I, I asked Crystal. It would impact the budget for the most part. It should not because most of the people here are getting two dose vaccines. So they start getting vaccines. So the, the guidelines say will be for fully vaccinated people. Anyone who is not vaccinated tomorrow, unless they're getting the Johnson and Johnson, won't be fully vaccinated until mid-October anyway.
That's right.
So it won't have a budget impact, except for the people, the minority of people who get Johnson and Johnson, but I would just ask that they simply wait, um, till October first for their, for their, uh, incentive.
You could do that. The only thing is, uh, Kristen, about the funds.
Yes, um, I know, of course, I had asked me, um, I believe I have not seen the guidelines, but if, if I'm correct, you won't get your incentive until you get your last dosage. So if you go on the fourteenth, you will get your second dosage until May of October. Um, like you said, the Johnson and Johnson is one dose. Um, if they, between the fourteenth and the thirtieth, if they go and get that vaccination, uh, we can let them know, you know, October first, expect a, a form of payment, uh, in the mail or, um, I, I don't know.
Well, this, this, um, the guidelines ask them to, uh, register at the judge's office. So once they, they will be eligible for payment if they're unvaccinated and get the Johnson and Johnson. Um, or I just, I don't want one sentence that I use to be picked out and say, oh, that, that's the guideline. So, um, if you receive Pfizer or Moderna, um, in the, in the, for the remainder of September, they, they're eligible by the guidelines, no matter what, because they won't be eligible to apply until they're fully vaccinated, which at the earliest would be October fourteenth. But if for the remainder of September, you get a Johnson and Johnson, we only ask that you then go through the, you will still be eligible, but we ask that you apply. Um, or you, or don't expect to receive your payment until October. Yeah, till the new budget year.
Okay. One question, for example, on one we have to have, uh, the Moderna, it's been up to have a level later. That we're gonna pay half and then they're gonna, we'll have to wait till they get the second dose.
Uh, in the, in the guidelines that were distributed to us, it says a hundred dollars, um, completion, for getting a required dose of the COVID nineteen vaccine.
We had talked about that. And I think the question was, is do we want to provide incentive and incentivize each and people to get the full coverage as opposed to half coverage? Cause originally it did say fifty per shot. Secondly, there was the added idea of, well, are we somehow incentivizing the J and J vaccine? Because it's easier to get the hundred dollars. And so I think what happened is they just settled on a hundred dollars to be pulled back.
Uh, yeah, it's, it, in, in the other sense here, yeah, it says upon proof of full vaccination.
Something that I would bring up is that you have, there are some people right now who only have half the vaccine. So if they were to get it in. Yeah. What I'm saying, they need to be included in October first.
Yep, uh, because technically they're, I
Because there are some, I know some of them that have gotten half of the vaccine, either Pfizer or Moderna, and they are due to get another one at this point, so.
And I think when we kinda ran our back the envelope calculations based on the survey that we had, we only used the percentage of fully vaccinated. So we would still be in line with that. We would so match our projections. If we do it the way you're talking about.
Do we know which one they given at Walmart?
I do not.
I don't know. I wanna say Pfizer.
I, I think very few people are doing Johnson and Johnson.
If I'm not mistaken, oh, I don't know, maybe you have to go between Walmart and H U B, which you can request, which one you want. But I don't know that you can request it at the same place.
Yeah.
But I know you can request Johnson and Johnson or Moderna at H U B.
Yeah.
And you may can request.
I think if we just change it to something along the lines that the person must become fully vaccinated during the vaccination, during the eligibility period.
If, if, if that makes you feel better, I'm, I'm satisfied with the rate, way it reads now, uh, fulfilling those, uh, guidelines and answering that question. Um, just one other, one other point. Um, it requires registering at your office. Um, is there any way for people from Dilly or more Bigfoot to register more locally for them? Um, it, it, I'm not sure that has to be answered today, but, um, there might be some opportunities. Partnership, see the fire departments at that. Not, not to put it, we're gonna, the fire department, uh, well, you're pure salt, fire department anyway, but, um.
There, I know at Bigfoot this weekend, they're having a fundraiser.
Yeah.
And we might, uh, I might ask either Mark and I or it's a museum or someone there.
But the other thing that might be possible is to, if free regional hospital can bring a, a tent of vaccine pop-up or South Texas Rural Health Services, um, and advertise a hundred dollar incentive. Um, I, I don't, I don't mind it. Coordinating that. One other clarification. So I see here that they register, right now it's registered in your, in your office, judge. How will they actually receive the payment? So they, they, they're applying.
Right. They gotta come back with the sign of receipt and the sentence signed by the doctor who were giving the vaccine and bring it back to Crystal, so she can go ahead.
So, uh, that's the law, I mean, it would provide the payment in cash or?
That's the way it felt, um, because if it credit, the card is gonna, you have to pay money to get the debit card.
Yeah, depending on what type of card you get, we will have to pay, um, a fee. And then if that person needs the card, they would also have to pay a fee. So however, the court would like to decide how to issue payment. Um,
It's either way, they have to send it, that they did receive the payment.
Yeah. And then they will, so it's, it's up to the, the court on how they decide to, to, um, distribute the payment.
Joseph, give any cash? Would that be all right?
Thinking that, you guys can decide to do either one. Obviously, one will be more responsible that we're not having to pay to get the cards on. And I don't think that they, living, yeah, I think that.
And, and, and are we, are we advising, um, residents that they can expect payment the same day that they register?
Well, when they get the vaccine.
Well, so, so they get the vaccine, they come to your office, they register. Can they expect to get payment that same day? So in other words, is Crystal gonna, you know, cash and, and I'll have cash on hand.
I mean, depending on how it works, uh, well, that's another thing, we'd have to probably, I'll have to reach out to the bank with, you know, I don't know if they will, we have to write a check for ourselves and cash it, um, uh. Let me clear it up with Pete, since he oversees the, the bank account on how, um, that works. If, you know, we again, write a check for ourselves.
And then, uh, how much is it in a?
Yeah. So I don't know if we're gonna do this once a week, yeah, every Monday, go and get a check or one, one time trip. Or whatever we have left over, we deposit it back there. Um, but I wouldn't like to pull that with cash in my office. So I think probably like once a week kind of thing.
Well, also that's the bench, that's the, you know, for having pros and cons, cash versus cards. That's the pro of the card is that you would just activate the card and keep a stack of cards.
And if we wrote a check, um, checks are pretty expensive for us. Buying checks. Um, they would have to print them, you know, that the supplies of that will have an effect on the town. Um, and then having all the signers here to sign off on the check.
Would you be able to get the cards by October first? Do you think?
The card?
Yeah.
Well, we can buy cards. What I'm moving to.
Well, I'm asking now, I'm asking is, is another option instead of the cash.
Well, then we would have to, I know whenever we kicked off the, what is that census?
Hmm.
I know Mr. Trevino had a, a hard time finding, um, the cards. Um, H U B Walmart if they were out, you know, so they were having to make a trip to Divine.
Mr. Reyes from the city of Pierceall suggested going through the same bank that we have our credit cards through. They had a, City Bank, they had a census program where, um, that, that's what they did. They gave those out.
Okay.
Um, and so, yeah, you have the cards, you have sitting on cash and they, they activated. And that also makes it good for auditing purposes.
Okay. Yeah, I can reach out to City Bank as well to see if they, um, they can help us out with that and I can get back to you all with more information.
Okay. So the, the cashier, the cashier card answer is pending, but we won't be able to assure residents that they will receive a one hundred dollar incentive in some, some form. Um, and so, okay, that, that answers all my questions. Big point.
It'll be just a county residence.
Yes, that's what's on the guidelines. So that will be one of the things I assume that you're gonna be, it, it says here in the guidelines, picture ID required approval for county residents. So if you are someone, so for anyone who comes to register your office, judge, you know, we, we know that we have a lot of residents that don't have ID. I think a lot of the people who need to get the vaccine will not have the ID. Um, South Texas Rural Health Services assists with that. So you can from there, I bet you Ms. Pichardo would also possibly help. Uh, she has the time, so I'd say it's an opportunity, you know, we want people to have IDs anyway, because then we enroll them in other services and we can. I'd say it's an opportunity, you know, we want people to have IDs anyway, because then we can enroll them in other services and we can register them to vote. There's a lot of good reasons for that, so we don't want to turn people away simply because they don't have IDs.
Usually in a small town, you know everybody.
So do we still need to take action to approve it with, with the changes, or is it gonna come back?
I think we can pass it with an amendment.
Yeah, you can make changes.
So I.
I need a motion, item number twenty seven, with the changes.
I, I moved to approve, I have number twenty seven with the amendment that we, the program will begin. September fourteenth. And payments will begin October first.
Okay. The motion been made by Commissioner Assensio, and item number twenty seven with the changes made, your second.
My second, Judge.
Second, Commissioner Carlos Salas, I'm in favor. Approved, thank you. Number twenty eight, Field County Council, request, receiving persons from the following county officials, the following reports are mandated by law. Twenty eight point one, presentation of Field County Treasurer Detail Report, as mandated by section. One one four point zero two six, Local Government Code. This is supposed to be presented at each regular term, Commissioner's Board. We did get the report from the treasurer's office. So if there's no questions, I need a motion to accept them.
I'm going to. I move to accept.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Carlos Salas to accept the treasurer's office report, your second. Second, Commissioner Graffel in favor. Approved, thank you. Real quick question. We, we're still gonna meet tomorrow with Pete?
Yes, I know he had texted me today asking me what time to meet, but I was preparing for the budget and I didn't get a chance to respond, but yes.
Well, whatever time you want. Then, uh, number twenty nine, Field County Council, request, presentation for section. One one four point zero four four, Local Government Code, by Field County Justice Court, Field County Clerk, Field County Treasurer, Field County Attorney. Field County Judge, Field County Chair, Field County Alter, all the JPs and all the constables. Okay, motion by Commissioner Graff, with the exception that we just announced, very second.
My second, Judge.
Second, Commissioner Carlos Salas, in favor. Approved, thank you. Thirty, documents, resolutions, orders, documents.
Oh, my God, I'm going to.
So I'm sorry I had to get up at me, but all this talk is on the reading. Luckily, a lot of it's a consistent package, so it's not as big as it seems.
Yes.
Yes.
Judge, are y'all done?
Not yet.
No, not yet.
Laura, Laura, you're on time now, otherwise.
What was that, Judge?
You're on time anyways.
I guess so.
Later, Sheriff.
I did forget to. And I regret we have to provide as an addendum, the tax rate calculation, what you got on a. So those are in the back, you know, like it's for, for your review, to see what kind of.
No, there are signatures, there shouldn't be signatures after that. I put our normal signature block there.
Yeah. I have a smaller copy.
Yeah, well, I know she brought the big copy, but I didn't know.
No, I'm all right. I appreciate it, though. No, yeah.
Well, we've had other meetings that started later, we have a trilateral with the state and stuff, but.
They're all over here.
No, they're right here.
Chaos. I'm glad I get to get it going before bedtime.
Someone that's five days.
No. Does it get salved here? It never come.
My house, yeah. Yes. Yeah, I have it.
Yes, sir.
No, no, Judge, you don't, I don't, you don't want to sign the budget because it didn't vote for it.
No.
Then we're just gonna come through the time. Keep saying that's correct.
That sounded.
Yeah.
What did you need done?
I mean, there's no reason you can't sign it.
Mine is saying is it.
Because it's the way it was in the record book.
The signing just says that you were present.
Right, it's been approved by the court.
You don't have to, you can approve a minute to know you want here.
I think Mary wants that, that's just a letter to the, the people, so, yeah, you guys can go ahead and sign it too. This isn't an order, this is just a welcome to the county, and it has all your guys' signatures for the handbook. Welcome to your doom. Ask me the law.
Yes, I might, whenever I corrected you on that last number, I said, if, if, if I, if I know somebody that's watching is gonna say, oh. They approved and it was forcing off.
Yeah. Joseph.
I don't understand this, I'm gonna play handbook.
Basically, what you're signing there is a letter welcoming the employees to the county, so go ahead and sign it. That doesn't have any importance.
They wanna have their commission, their entire commission's court signature, saying welcome.
Just can you finish editing the guidelines? Would you, you know, to me?
I don't have the word document, because I wasn't the primary editor, but, yeah.
You're gonna post it on Facebook tomorrow to let everyone read the cover of them?
Yes. I don't know if you're on, you just said, because that's what I heard, is about Roy Black doesn't work here anymore. Hurries.
He doesn't work, you know?
No.
Came back from his vacation and.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's been about five or six. He was early to you all.
Yeah.
And I think everybody.
Yeah, exactly. He's up there in the south. Yeah, he came by to say hi and bye. Exactly, right?
Yes, I didn't know. I mean, whenever we had an issue with them, they came over to evaluate. So. I don't have the. The, the actual budget.
Oh, I have it.
That, this needs to be with that, right?
Yeah, but I was gonna take them back, because I'm gonna make copies of them. Yeah. Because we have another one. Well, if Jack didn't vote, it. We still have him do this, break his certificate.
Yes, because you're certifying that that is the budget that we passed, not that that's the budget being approved, so.
So tomorrow, I gotta see if Aaron's gonna be here. Okay, so once Aaron returns on Wednesday, we'll meet in his office and we'll get you to sign a certificate.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, no, I need to pay the bills.
There's no question. I'm gonna pay the bills.
Yeah, no, DPS, right. Motion being made by Commissioner Carlos Salas to pay the bills, we are second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Sanz, on your favor, I'm gonna abstain on DPS, pardon me. Thank you. Now I need a motion to adjourn.
Do a job, me too, John.
Motion being like, listen, Garcia, to adjourn your second, second, Commissioner Graff, in favor.
Fastest second I ever got.
I think we all understand how much damage, how damaging inaccurate budgets can be out there in the public, so let's shred, burn, whatever we got.
Is it okay if I stop?
I will, you want me to mail them to you? So what, what's gonna happen is this case is gonna be filled in with the.
Okay, Laura, we're through.